Today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in this chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden, Counselor Calera Zapata, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Louie Jen, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Pepe, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and Counselor Worrell. Quorum is presented.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy Pastor Dierfort Jean Florissant, known affectionately as Pastor Kiki. He is a profound figure within the Haitian community and within our city of Boston. If you didn't see, he was named one of the Bostonians of the Year by the Boston Globe. Born in Haiti, he moved to the United States at 20 as an undocumented immigrant. Early in Pastor Kiki's life, he showed his commitment to others and advocacy by establishing the Committee for the Defense of Immigrants in 1993, which mobilized support for Haitian rights in the United States. A graduate of Bunker Hill Community College and Gordon College, Pastor Florissant furthered his theological education at Gordon Cornwell Theological Seminary, earning both a Master of Divinity and a Master of Theology, and as of last weekend, a doctorate. So he is now Doctor Pastor Kiki. On behalf of the Boston City Council, I'd love to give you these flowers in recognition of your accomplishment and your achievement. Pastor Kiki's leadership extends across multiple fronts. He's the president of True Alliance Center, Chair of Haitian Americans United, and an executive team member of Greater Boston Interfaith Organization. His dedication to social and economic issues is also evident through his roles in various community organizations, including the Greater Boston Nazarene Compassionate Center and Mattapan Square Main Streets. In his ministry, Pastor Kiki is deeply committed to missionary work, regularly traveling to places like the Dominican Republic, the Bahamas, and Haiti to teach and inspire. At home, he impacts lives through his radio and television programs, discussing spiritual, social, and economic topics. It's a joy for me to have him here. I know some of my other colleagues also bring him here to give him vacation. It's a joy to have him here as a leader here in the Haitian community during May, Haitian Heritage Month, celebrating also his doctorate. And, you know, I have my actual father here in chambers, but to have my second father here in chambers is just such a blessing and such a joy. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Pastor Kiki, and after he's in vacation, we will together recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Kiki, you have the floor. And congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you so very much, my daughter, with the rejoin. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for inviting me to come in this special occasion, the celebration of Haitian Heritage Month. And I want to thank every member of the council who always stayed with our Haitian community, not only Haitian community in diaspora, but also stayed with Haiti. Thank you so very much. Let us stand, as we about to invoke the name of our maker, our creator. Let us bow our heads as well in reverence. Gracious and sovereign God, we come before you today with grateful heart as we gather in the sacred chamber of public service to honor your name, to honor, Father, your protection, and to honor, Father, your wisdom toward the people of the city of Boston. We thank you, oh Lord, for this opportunity granted by the leadership of the Boston City Council, especially its president, to uplift a community whose story is one of perseverance, hope, and historic triumph. As we celebrate Haitian Heritage Month, we invoke your divine presence over this council and the city. We remember the courage of those who came before us, those who sued the flag of liberation with faith in their hearts and fire in their bones. We thank you for the strength you have instilled in the Haitian people, just as declared to Joshua, Joshua 1:9, "Be strong and courageous; do not be afraid, for the Lord of your God is with you wherever you go." Through revolutions, earthquakes, migrations, and hardship, your hand has sustained us. We praise you for the courage to rise again and again, echoing the words of the Apostle Paul. "We are hard-pressed on every side, but not crushed; perplexed, but not in despair; struck down, but not destroyed," 2 Corinthians 4:8-9. We lift up the value of conviction, Lord, just as you taught us through Micah, "to act justly, to love mercy, and to work humbly before our God. May our heritage always be linked with justice, unity, and righteousness." "Haiti is the origin of black republics," said the abolitionist Frederick Douglass. "She has taught the world the danger of slavery and the value of liberty. May we honor that prophetic truth today by continuing to stand for freedom and dignity for all people." Finally, Father, we give thanks for the opportunity, the doors you continue to open for our children, our families, and the rising generations. As it is written in Revelation 3:8, "I have placed before you an open door that no one can shut." We receive that promise today. Bless the deliberations of this council. May every decision be guided by wisdom, compassion, and equity. May the spirit of unity and the pursuit of the common good prevail, not just during this month of celebration, but in every day that follows. May your peace rest upon this city, and may your justice roll on like a river, your righteousness like a never-filling stream. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, the God of justice, healing and hope, I pray. Amen.
Amen. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Pastor Kiki. We really appreciate your stewardship here in the city and how you lead and your prayer, just bringing everything together. So thank you, mes siemples, pasqués, laos, samavécnu, epiwap celebre. Okay, we are going, we have two presentations today, and I know that Counselor Santana's presenters are on a time crunch, so I'm going to bring up Counselor Santana, who will be honoring those doing the work of cancer research, and then we will have another presentation for me in honor of Haitian Heritage Month. So Counselor Santana, you have the floor in five minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, everyone. Definitely want to invite Sam Anthony, Dan, Dr., Maeve, everyone to come up here. As they come up, I'll begin my remarks. Want to say good afternoon to my colleagues and to the members of the public who are watching. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise today and speak on an issue that is deeply personal to me and undoubtedly to so many of you as well. Over the last two years, I've watched my mother, the strongest person I know, battle cancer with grace, courage, and unwavering resilience. It's a journey that has forever changed me, and it's one I know is not unique. Whether it's a parent, a child, a friend, or even ourselves, cancer touches every family and every community. As your large city counselor, representing every neighborhood in our great city, I carry these stories with me every day. Behind every statistics is a face, a name, a life. And today, I rise not just as a public official, but as a son, a neighbor, and an advocate to call attention to the urgent need to protect and strengthen federal funding for lifesaving cancer research. Boston is a global leader in cancer research and innovation. Our city is home to some of the world's finest hospitals and research institutions, and our scientists, doctors, and frontlines healthcare workers are pushing the boundaries of what's possible. Let me just share just one example. Between 2011 and 2018, the Dana Farber Harvard Cancer Center corridor right here in Boston was responsible for nearly half of all FDA-approved cancer treatments. That's not just progress, that's hope, that's lives saved. But that's progress is now at risk. Proposed federal budget cuts to the National Institutes of Health and the National Cancer Institute will be a direct blow to our city's ability to conduct the research that leads to treatments, to cures, and to second chances. These cuts could halt clinical trials, jeopardize jobs, and slow down the science that saves lives. That's why I introduced a legislative resolution this week urging the federal government not to cut funding for cancer research and to fully fund the NIH and NCI. I'm proud to say that earlier today, that later today, the council will be voting on the resolution, and it will now be sent to the, you know, hopefully will be sent to the congressional delegation and both to our U.S. senators. But this fight is about more than just numbers on a spreadsheet, it's about people. That's why I want to highlight the unique risk faced by our Boston firefighters. Due to their exposure on the job, firefighters have a 9% higher risk of being diagnosed with cancer and a 14 higher, a 14% higher risk of dying from it. The science is clear, the very act of keeping us safe puts them at risk. That's unacceptable. Later today, I'll be introducing, well, I'm proud to stand alongside Boston firefighter Local 718 President Sam Dillon to announce a forthcoming hearing on occupational cancer risk among our firefighters and now the city of Boston and how the city of Boston can do more to support their prevention, diagnosis, and treatment. I'm thankful to, I'm Counselor Flynn and Counselor President Louie Jen, who will be co-sponsoring this hearing order with me later today. This isn't just policy, this is personal. It's about my mother, it's about your families, it's about firefighters, our healthcare workers, and the countless people in Boston whose lives depend on us speaking out and stepping up. I'm proud to be joined today by two incredible leaders in this fight. I'd like to now invite them to the dice and to share a few words. First, we'll have Dr. Maeve O'Byrne, a resident physician and proud member of C-I-R-S-E-I-U, who is on the front lines of patient care and research here in Boston. And second, I'll have Sam Dillon and Dan, President of the Boston Firefighters Local 718, representing the brave men and women who serve our city every day. Please join me and welcome them. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Maeve O'Byrne. I'm a resident physician at UMass Chan Medical Center and a proud primary care physician for hundreds of patients across the Commonwealth. Firstly, I would like to thank Counselor Santana for organizing this presentation and to thank City Council President Louie Jen, as well as the honorable members of the Boston City Council for allowing me to speak today. Admittedly, this is the first time that I've spoken at a hearing like this, and when I was drafting my remarks, my initial thought was to cite facts and statistics. I could tell you that in the United States, over 1,777,000 people are nearly diagnosed with cancer. That was in 2021 alone. But I'm not here to talk about numbers, I'm here to talk about people. I wanted to tell you about my patient, who we will call Dana. Dana came to my primary care clinic one afternoon after finding out that her mother and younger sister were both diagnosed with a type of hereditary breast cancer. Dana is sitting under fluorescent lights in a gown made of paper, asking a thousand excellent questions, all of which start with the words "what if." In her line of questions, she refers to her own body as, in her words, "a ticking time bomb." And her phrasing sticks with me even to this day. I know as a physician that Dana's genetic code dramatically increases her risk of developing breast cancer in her lifetime, but I had never thought about the emotional weight of carrying around a thousand what-ifs. I reassured her that in the city of Boston alone, there are thousands of researchers working around the clock, discovering innovative ways to treat and prevent cancer. I told her that whatever curveballs life throws her way, she will have a whole team standing beside her. I strongly urge you to consider the resolution that is being presented in this chamber today. I ask you to preserve funding for the lifesaving research that gives hope to patients like Dana and to patients everywhere. With that, I yield my time.
Thank you very much, Counselor President Louie Jen, members of the Boston City Council, and especially Counselor Santana for inviting us here today to take on this incredibly pressing and important issue. I want to echo the sentiments of Counselor Santana, what he just said. This is personal. This fight is personal. There's not a member in this building today who can't say they haven't been personally impacted by a diagnosis of cancer, either to themselves, a friend, or a loved one. And Counselor Santana, while I never had the pleasure, your mother's incredibly proud of you for taking this fight on. Thank you. As President of Boston Firefighters Local 718, I'm here today to speak on behalf of my brother and sister firefighters and their families, who are currently dealing with the devastating impacts of occupational cancer within the Boston Fire Department and the fire service around the world. I'm joined by firefighter Dan Ranahan, a second-generation Boston firefighter, the president and founder of the Boston Fire Cancer Foundation, and most importantly, himself a proud survivor of occupational cancer. Dan wasn't presented with the fight of his life, he was presented with a fight for his life. And he took cancer on the way he takes on fires, head-on, full speed, full tilt, and Dan kicked cancer's ass. Not just on behalf of himself and his family, but for every Boston firefighter who came after him who's been diagnosed. The work that Dan does through his foundation benefits our members, benefits our families, and today, courtesy of early detection, cancer awareness, and early intervention, there are Boston firefighters who are alive today because of the work of that foundation. The statistics involving occupational cancer in the fire service are sobering. As you heard Counselor Santana say, Boston firefighters have a 9% higher risk of being diagnosed with cancer and a 14% higher risk of dying from that diagnosis. A 90% higher chance of brain cancer and an 81% elevated chance of receiving a Hodgkin's lymphoma diagnosis. To date, 75% of line-of-duty deaths within the fire service across the international, the names that we sadly put on our memorial wall each and every year, 75% of those line-of-duty deaths are directly related to occupational cancer. As Boston firefighters, our job is to risk our lives to save others. We don't accept this danger, we embrace it, and we wear it like a badge of honor. We also don't accept failure, and we don't accept loss. I'm here today to say on behalf of Local 718, we are finished standing graveside to our fallen brothers and sisters who gave their lives due to occupational cancer far too early. Another statistic I do want to highlight, the average life expectancy of a retired Boston firefighter upon retirement is five years. And an incredible driving force of that five-year retiree life expectancy is occupational cancer. The impacts that this is having on firefighters are brutal. Not just the firefighters who are diagnosed and not just the firefighters who are passing away, their families bear the brunt of that after their loss. An empty seat at dinner, a parent not attending a baseball game, someone who's not there to open presents on Christmas morning, this is the cold reality of what we are facing within Local 718 and within the fire service. I commend the work of Counselor Santana, and I commend this honorable body for bringing this fight out of the shadows and bringing it where it needs to be, to the seat of government, where the decisions have to be made that will continue to save the lives of Boston firefighters and prevent the devastating impacts that this is having on us and our families. Within the fire service, it's almost become a question of not if, but when will I get that phone call? When will I be diagnosed? When will one of my brother or sister firefighters, who I have served alongside for 10, 12, 25 years, when will they be diagnosed? We're looking over our shoulders, which can't happen. There's no politics inside of a burning building, just our mission. The mission to save lives and protect each other at all costs and by any means necessary. Once again, I commend the Boston City Council for recognizing our fight and joining us as the allies that we have to have into destroying the death sentence that has become occupational cancer within the fire service. It has to stop, and the beginning of that end starts today by having these difficult discussions and doing the work that must be done. I thank you for the honor of addressing the city council today. Thank you for standing with us on this fight. We have to have you, we know that we're going to have you by our side. I appreciate that on behalf of our firefighters and our families.
Can my colleagues please join us up here for a perfect picture? Just really want to thank our speakers today.
Step forward. Come on. Don't be shy. It was a long time coming, the clover tree. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Open. I want to thank you so much, Counselor Santana, for that presentation. I know that this fight is personal for you. We continue to pray for and uplift your mother and everyone here in the city who is battling cancer to our firefighters who put themselves at risk in taking on this job and the increase of occupational cancer. So we will do, continue to do what we can here. What inspires me and what inspires my colleagues is that we are all fighting multiple fights, carrying heaviness with us in this moment. There's a lot of grief and there's a lot of pain in our city right now that we're carrying personally and individually, but we're still here doing the work, making sure that we are on the front lines with those who are experiencing pain. So I just want to thank you for, for my colleagues, for all the work that you're doing, because I know it's not easy and a lot of this is very personal. So I just want to make sure that I shine a light on the tough work that I know so many of you are doing and carrying so much grief. It's a, so again, just want to thank Dan, want to thank Dr. Maeve O'Byrne, want to thank Sam and Tony, Tony coming off of a big victory, C-I-R-S-E-I-U, and their contract. So want to congratulate Tony on that. To, you know, Haitian Heritage Month, I'll talk about it a little bit more for resolutions, but it's a month we're supposed to celebrate, as Pastor Kiki stated, who we are as the first free black republic in the Western Hemisphere, the only country founded from a slave revolt. And Haiti is spiraling in chaos right now, and uncertainty and instability, and I don't know a person who isn't, who isn't a Haitian person who is not affected by what's going on in Haiti. It's, um, it's, it's been really difficult. And so a question we often get is, with all that's going on, how can you celebrate? And I think the question is, with all that's going on, how can we not? How can we forget who we are? How can we allow bad actors and bad people to rob us of our joy and to rob us of our story? We know who we are as a city, and we are on the front lines for our firefighters experiencing cancer, for our loved ones, for our immigrant communities who are under attack, and we stand united in that fight. So with that, I'd like to introduce with a lot of joy KS Dance Studio, which was founded in February 2011 by Carmen Cynthia Augustin. She's a professional dancer, choreographer, dance instructor, and dance award recipient. She studied Haitian folklore, hip-hop, and jazz at Joel Donatien Belo Eco de Danse in Port-au-Prince, Haiti. After moving to the United States in 2009, she continued her dance studies in modern, contemporary, and ballet at Pine Manor College, where she graduated with a minor in dance. Carmen Cynthia was also a member of the dance ensemble, the Pine Manor College Dance Team. KS Dance Studio is a dynamic and inclusive dance organization rooted in the greater Boston area, with an additional location in Taunton, Massachusetts. For over a decade, the studio has been a vital part of the local community, participating in cultural events and touching hearts with its passionate performances. KS Dance Studio offers a broad range of dance classes, including ballet, hip-hop, Afrobeat, Haitian folklore, liturgical, lyrical, contemporary, zumba, ballet dancing, and social dances, open to students of all ages and skill levels. The studio's inclusive approach ensures that everyone has an opportunity to explore their love for dance, regardless of their background or experience. And I'd also like to put in a plug for them for this Sunday evening, they'll be having a show at the Stray End Theater at 6 o'clock. I'm sure, sure if you wanted to come and say a few words just about KS Dance Studio, and then we will be treated to a wonderful dance performance.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Carmen Cynthia, and I'm the founder of KS Dance Studio. So I would like to invite you all at this wonderful presentation performance that we're having at the Stray End Theater on Sunday, perfect date, May 18, which is Haitian Flag Day, at 5:00 p.m. The show is titled Genesis: The Journey from Hispaniola to Haiti. So if you've never, if you don't know much about the Haitian history, it's a perfect opportunity to come and see it live onstage. The story takes place starting from the 1400s, before Christopher Columbus arrived in Haiti with the Tainos people, and we end the show in the 1800s with the Haitian Revolution, which made Haiti the first black independent nation.
If you could, thank you so much. If you could please join us, and my colleagues could please join us for a photo, as well as Pastor Kiki, we have our, the resolution acknowledging Haitian Heritage Month that we'll be introducing later, but would love it if you all could come forward. And whoever my father is too, if he'd like to. Thank you so much to Carm Cynthia and for that beautiful, beautiful performance, and I hope you have a wonderful performance on Sunday. The words of that song, When Haiti's Free, oh, how beautiful it will be, and I think that's important for us to carry with us, so thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, could you please amend the record to reflect that Councilors Coletta Zapata, Brayden, and Worrell are now present and with us? Okay, now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of May 7, 2025. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the May 7 meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from our Honored the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1051?
Docket number 1051, Message and Art Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $23,860 in the Form of a Grant for the Fiscal Year 25 Firefighter Safety Equipment Grant, Round Two, awarded by Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the procurement of necessary equipment, firefighter personnel protective and safety equipment to comply with the National Fire Protection Association and Occupational Safety and Health Administration standards.
Thank you. Docket number 1051 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1052?
Docket number 1052, Message and Art Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $15,000 in the Form of a Grant for the BTHC Program, awarded by the Donor Group, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund free tax preparation and filing services to low and moderate income Boston residents.
Thank you. Docket number 1052 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, could you please read dockets number 1053 through 1055?
Docket number 1053, Communication Received from Council President Louie Jean Regarding City Council Rule 48. Docket number 1054, Communication Received from Scott Flynn, City Auditor, Transmitting a List of Fiscal Year 25 Reallocations Made by the Mayor Prior to April 15, 2025, for the Purpose of Continuing Operations. Docket number 1055, Communication from Councilor Flynn Regarding Downtown Public Safety. And docket number 1056, Communication Received from the City Clerk Transmitting a Communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council Action on the Designation of the Old North Church and Campus, 193 Salem Street, Boston, Mass. as a Landmark, in effect after June 6, 2025, if not acted upon.
Thank you. These communication, dockets number 1053 to 1055 will be placed on file. The Chair recognizes Council Worrell. Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to have docket number 1054, 1054 be referred to Ways and Means Committee.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please refer docket number 1054 to the Committee on Ways and Means? Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you. Happy Preservation Month. As the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, I'm in strong support of the Boston Landmarks Commission's unanimous decision to designate the Old North Church and Campus in the North End as an official Boston landmark. As the oldest standing church building in our city and one of the most iconic in our nation, Old North is more than just bricks and mortar. It is a living symbol of our collective identity as Bostonians and Americans. Built in 1723 and 1740, this historic church stood at the center of one of the most consequential moments in American history, when two lanterns and its steeple signaled the movement of British troops to the Sons of Liberty on the night of April 18, 1775. This is immortalized by Henry Wadworth Longfellow's Paul Revere's Ride, and one that continues to resonate as a powerful emblem of liberty and resistance, and I know Councilor Coletta Zapata, we honored that just last month. Given today's sociopolitical environment and the protection of these symbols and for our prosperity is even more consequential. The significance of Old North extends beyond the birth of our nation, a beautiful example of pre-revolutionary English architectural tradition, a Georgian gem inspired by Sir Christopher Wren, and a growing commitment to tell a full, inclusive story of all who shaped it. Today, researchers and advocates are working diligently to bring forward the stories of Black and Indigenous members who have too long been excluded from our broader narrative of Old North's history. This landmark designation is about preservation and ensures that the historic site will be protected from demolition or appropriate alteration in perpetuity, and it affirms that we, as a city, value our heritage not just for aesthetic beauty or tourism value, but also for the truths it holds and the stories that it invites us to keep telling. As many of you know, I'm a strong proponent of a dynamic and changing Boston to foster growth and development we need in our city, but some things should absolutely not change. That same future will be for naught if we don't apply the same vigor to preserve landmarks of obvious value. This landmark, I'm surprised that this is not already a Boston landmark. That's why I'm proud as the Chair, and it's one of my deepest honors to move for this landmark designation to be voted on before the entire body. I want to commend the cooperation of Christ Church and Old North Illuminated for their stewardship, and I applaud the Boston Landmarks Commission for the unanimous vote, and the Mayor for approving this designation. Today, I urge my colleagues in this body to do our part in actively affirming their decision, and I'd like to pass it to the, my district council colleague, Council Coletta Zapata, who represents the area.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Chair. I was proud to support the Old North Church up at the Landmarks Commission on April 22. I think my council colleagues did an incredible job talking about the history of the Old North Church. It is actually, for folks that don't know, it is the oldest standing church in Boston. It is a rare and exceptionally preserved example of Georgian architecture. Its steeple remains a defining feature of the North End skyline, and its original interior offers a glimpse into colonial era life and worship practices. Today, it's evolved into an incredible civic organization and programming and educational facility. It's now called Old North Illuminated. It was formerly Old North Foundation. It provides the public programming, school visits, educational exhibits, and engages thousands of residents and visitors each year. Its role in civic life continues to evolve while remaining grounded in its deep and at times challenging historical roots. So designating it as a landmark will ensure that we honor and preserve our past so that we can better inform the citizenship of our future, and I urge my colleagues to support this designation as a landmark. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to speak on docket 1055.
Okay, that's not, we're still on docket number, we went to, we kind of skipped ahead and went to 1056, so I will call on you right when we're done. Is anyone looking else, speaking, is anyone else looking to speak on docket 1056? Council Durkin, if I'm correct, you're seeking passage of this as a landmark. Okay. Council Durkin seeks, as Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks passage of docket number 1056. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1056. Councilor Brayden?
Yes.
Councilor Brayden, yes. Councilor Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Councilor Coletta Zapata, yes. Council Durkin?
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn?
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louie Jean?
Yes.
Council Louie Jean, yes. Council Mejia?
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Pitt Penn?
Yes.
Council Pitt Penn, yes. Council Santana?
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber?
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Worrell?
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number 1056 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1056 has passed. Okay, Council Flynn, you have the floor to speak on docket number 1055.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a letter I sent for myself to the Boston Police Commission about challenges we experience in the downtown area of Boston, public safety and quality of life issues. This is an issue I know well. I've been working on this issue for seven years. I know the downtown area. I went to, I went to high school here. I served as a probation officer. My son went to height, my son went to grade school here in this area as well. I come into this building every day and spend a lot of downtown time in the downtown Boston area. The downtown Boston neighborhood over the last several years declined significantly, in my opinion, public safety and quality of life issues. However, we did come together as a neighborhood, as a city, to address the ongoing crime, the ongoing public safety challenges. We came together to acknowledge that we had significant public safety issues, including open drug dealing and open drug use, violent crime, quality of life issues. We want to get people into recovery services, into detox programs. That's what I've done my whole life as a probation officer here at Suffolk Superior Court. But having said that, we have to address people that are selling drugs and using drugs. Through my constant advocacy, we have, or we're working on ensuring that anyone that is using drugs or selling drugs in the city is now arrested, and we have seen progress in the downtown area, especially over the last four or five months because of this change in policy, not a change in law, but a change in policy, to arrest anyone that's selling drugs or using drugs. This morning, fast forward this morning, I, along with Councilor Durkin, held a kind of a coffee hour meeting in the Boston Common area, and we discussed these issues, these quality of life issues, with residents and with neighbors, with civic groups, with the police were present, city officials as well in Beacon Hill, the Back Bay was present, the Bay Village, Chinatown, Fort Point, and obviously the downtown area. What we agreed on is it's incredibly important that we work together. Council Murphy was there as well. What we agreed on is we have to continue to work together to address quality of life issues, public safety concerns, and challenges. I'm not giving up on the downtown community. I love that neighborhood. I was on a meeting earlier this week with the Beacon Hill Civic Association, and that's what the residents were asking us, is we need more services and support in downtown Boston and the Boston Common. It's about working together, and that's what I'm committed to doing as the District Two City Council, working with everybody in this room as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. That docket, docket number 1055, is placed on file. The other two were placed on file as well. I will speak briefly on docket number 1053 regarding the City Council Rule 40A. As you see, I wrote an inquiry to Corporation Council regarding Rule 40A, which states the Council President shall automatically refer a matter to the Council upon a felony conviction of any member by any state or federal court. And as this is communication, I will speak briefly. This serves as a referral of the matter, asked the Corporation Council to weigh in in light of the Turner decision, which came after Rule 40A, which basically stated that under city, under the city charter, neither under the city charter or under state law, did the City Council have the authority to remove Chuck Turner from the Boston City Council. And so that is clear, that is a clear precedent, that is the Supreme Judicial Court, our highest court in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, has stated what the City Council's powers are and are not. It did approve of the City Council's removal of the Counselor at Issue then from committees and condoned that, and so I wanted to have this as part of the record, as referring it to the committee, as referring it to the Council, and also make note that a month ago, the Counselor at Issue, Councilor District Seven, was removed from all committees. So just to clarify, Mr. Clerk, dockets number 1053 to 1055 are placed on file, and docket number 1056 has passed.
1054 to Ways and Means?
Oh, and, oh, sorry, yes. Okay, 1053 is placed on file, 1054 to Ways and Means, 1055 is placed on file, and 1056 has passed. Okay, we are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0144?
Docket number 0144, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on January 8, 2025. Docket number 0144, Petition for a Special Law Regarding Rank-Choice Voting in Boston. Supports a report recommending that the docket ought to pass in a new draft.[1533.35][1533.35](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, the Chair of the Government Ops, Council Coletta Zapata. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and I want to thank the makers of this docket, Councilors Ruti Louie Jean, Councilor Mejia, and Councilor Henry Santana. This was referred originally to the committee last year, but again formally on January 8, 2025. A brief summary of the legislation, and then I'll go into the summary of amendments after a lengthy review process. Docket 0144 is a proposed home rule petition that would implement rank-choice voting in municipal elections in the City of Boston. Rank-choice voting is a system in which voters rank candidates in order of preference rather than selecting just one. Voters may rank up to four candidates, including write-ins for each contest. In single winner elections, if no candidate receives more than 50% of first-choice votes, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated, and their votes are redistributed to the next highest-ranked active candidate on the ballot. This process continues in rounds until one candidate earns a majority and is declared the winner. In multi-winner contests, such as for at-large City Council races, a candidate is elected upon reaching a specific threshold, and surplus votes are redistributed to help determine the remaining winners. This method ensures that the winning candidates have broad support and reflects a more representative electoral outcome. The home rule petition addresses definitions related to RCV, procedures related to the preliminary, general, and special elections, the tabulation process, reporting results, and implementation. If passed at the city and state level, the proposal to adopt RCV in Boston would be placed before Boston voters on a future election ballot. If approved by a majority of voters, RCV would apply to all general and special elections for mayor and district city councilor, where there are three or more candidates, as well as to all general elections for city councilors at large. The legislation is designed to take effect only if the ballot question is approved and at least 365 days have passed since that date, ensuring time for implementation. Under Section 1 of the proposed home rule petition, key terms related to the administration of RCV are defined, including active candidate, referring to any candidate not eliminated, withdrawn, or deceased; ranking, which denotes the order of candidate preferences on the ballot, on a ballot; the election threshold, which is used to determine winners in multi-seat contests. This section also defines the sequence of rounds used during vote tabulation and outlines who qualifies as a withdrawn or deceased candidate under state election law. In Section 2, it addresses the use of RCV in general and special elections, mandating that RCV be used for all general and special elections for mayor and district city councilors if there are more, if there are three or more candidates, and for all general elections for city councilors at large. This section specifies that general election ballots would allow voters to rank up to four candidates, including write-ins, in order of preference. It also proposes technical updates to existing city election laws to align with the RCV system, such as updating the number of blank write-in lines and clarifying how votes for eliminated candidates should be counted. To support the system, this section updates existing law to require that ballots provide blank write-in spaces equal to the number of seats being selected, being elected. It also clarifies that in ranked choice elections, the number of votes credited to a candidate who is eliminated will be the total they held in the last round before elimination, providing a consistent record of candidate performance across rounds. Section 3 addresses the use of RCV in preliminary elections by increasing the number of candidates who advance from the preliminary to general elections for mayor and district counselor from two to four. Language in this section also ensures that the top four vote-getters appear on the general election ballot, even in the event of a tie. Regarding the tabulation process, Section 4- Regarding the tabulation process, Section 4 details the process for tabulating RCV ballots as follows. In single winner contests, each ballot counts for the highest-ranked active candidate, and if no candidate has a majority, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated in successive rounds until a winner emerges. Whereas in multi-winner contests, such as at-large races, the threshold for election is calculated by dividing the total number of votes by five, rounding down and adding one. Under this section, candidates who surpass that threshold are elected, and their surplus votes are transferred proportionally to remaining candidates. If no more candidates reach the threshold, the lowest vote-getters are eliminated and their votes redistributed. The section also provides rules for how ballots are treated in cases of undervoting, overvoting, skipped rankings, and repeated rankings. Finally, this section outlines how ties are to be resolved using previous round totals or other procedures as established by the Elections Commission. With respect to reporting results, Section 5 requires that the Election Commission make unofficial results, including round-by-round breakdowns available as soon as possible after the polls close on election night. These results must be clearly labeled as preliminary. Under this section, the Commission is also required to publish final certified results that include the total number and percentage of votes each candidate received in each round and report how many ballots became inactive in each round, with explanations for those outcomes. And final anonymized results may be made available in formats that allow for public verification and analysis. In order to effectively carry out the new procedures required by this home rule petition, Section 6 grants the Election Commission authority to create rules and regulations necessary to implement this law. Pursuant to Section 8, implementation of RCV in the city of Boston would not take effect unless approved by a majority of voters at a future election date via ballot, excuse me, at a future election via a ballot question that would ask voters whether they have accepted the act titled "An Act to Implement Ranked Choice Voting for the City of Boston." If the question passes, the law would take effect immediately but apply only to municipal elections occurring at least 365 days after the date of the voter approval. I'm not going to read the information received at our hearings and working sessions, but we did hold a hearing on October 10th of 2024, and we've held two working sessions since then. In terms of summary of amendments, there were a number of amendments that emerged through this robust and extensive review process. And I'll go sequentially through the docket. So following the working sessions, the following amendments were made to this docket as filed. The Home Rule Petition as amended changes the title of the petition from "An Act Relative to Ranked Choice Voting in Boston" to "An Act to Implement Ranked Choice Voting in Boston." The Home Rule as amended updates outdated citations to match the 1951 codification. This Home Rule Petition as amended inserts the following definitions under Section 1 to clarify when RCV applies. This is regular election, special election, and write-in. The Home Rule Petition as amended strikes and inserts language under Section 2, subsection D, removing "other," and inserting "not conducted by ranked choice voting." The Home Rule Petition as amended strikes and inserts language under Section 4, subsections B and D, enhancing tabulation detail, refining surplus transfer description, and adding to the step-by-step tie-break hierarchy. And I'll read this particular amendment through for clarity purposes. As amended, Section 4B reads, "Multi-winner tabulation. In all contests for city councillor at large conducted by ranked choice voting, each ballot shall count in whole or in part for the highest-ranked active candidate on that ballot. In the first round, each ballot shall count as one vote for its highest-ranked active candidate, and the election threshold shall be determined by dividing the number of votes cast by five, rounding down to the nearest whole number and adding one. Tabulation shall proceed in the rounds as following, in the rounds as follows. If the number of active candidates is equal to the remaining number of seats to be elected, all active candidates shall be elected and the tabulation shall be complete. If an active candidate has a number of votes that equals or exceeds the election threshold, the active candidate with the most votes shall be elected. If the elected candidate has a number of votes that exceeds the threshold, the excess part of each vote received by that candidate shall count in the next round for the ballot's next ranked active candidate. If no active candidate equals or exceeds the election threshold, the candidate with the fewest votes shall be defeated and a new round shall begin. The excess part of each vote received by that candidate shall count in the next round for the candidate's next ranked active candidate, i.e. the voter's second, third, et cetera, ranked candidate on the ballot. Once the tabulation process has proceeded through successive rounds, shuts such that either the number of active candidates equals the remaining number of seats to be filled or no further vote transfers are possible due to exhausted ballots or the absence of additional ranked candidates, the contest shall be concluded." As amended, Section 4D also goes into explaining what happens in the matter of a tie. I won't read that one through, that's in your committee report. The Home Rule Petition as amended strikes and inserts language under Section 5, subsection A, to state that official round, unofficial round-by-round results must be released on election night, clearly marked preliminary, with a best effort deadline of 11:59 PM. The Home Rule Petition as amended inserts the following language under Section 5, subsection B, clause 2, to require the Commission to make available machine-readable final data to enable independent verification. The Home Rule Petition as amended inserts language under Section 6 to require the Elections Commission to, one, design easy-to-read RCV ballots; two, print clear ranking instructions; and, three, conduct a multilingual voter education campaign that also adheres to city disability policies. The Home Rule Petition as amended changes language under Section 7 to ensure that the petition is adopted as written, with the exception of clerical or non-substantive changes. The Home Rule Petition as amended inserts language under Section 8 to ensure clarity on the passage process for the legislation. And then last, the Home Rule Petition as amended inserts language within the second paragraph of Section 8 to clarify that the Law Department will finalize the summary. As amended, I'll read this through. The second paragraph of Section 8 reads as, "The City Law Department shall prepare the summary of the election, which shall appear on the ballot along with the question provided in this section, subject to any necessary changes required by law." And so, again, just want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank the activists of the Rank Choice Voting Coalition. It is with a lot of pride that, as the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend moving the listed docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. And at this time, my recommendation to the full council will be that this matter ought to pass in a new draft, and I would love to pass it to the docket's lead sponsor for any additional details you may have.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jean. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Chair of Government Operations, Counselor Gabriella Coletta Zapata. We've had a lot of conversations about this. Your office has done a lot of really great work in making sure that the revisions were made, that it was clear. So thank you to Ellie as well for all the work that you did, Jesse from my office, and just want to thank the entire Rank Choice, Rank Choice Boston Coalition, some of whom are here today. Thank you for being with us and for your diligence in making sure that this legislation was ready for us today. This is an exciting day for the city of Boston. It's an exciting day for democracy and for what it looks like to bring people closer to the work of democracy. Ranked choice voting makes our elections better by allowing voters to rank candidates in order of preference. Now, I love it when Boston is the first at something, but unfortunately, this is not an area in which we would be the first. There are many other jurisdictions that have and use ranked choice voting. During one of our working sessions, we saw how they use it in San Francisco, used in New York, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Minnesota, Santa Fe, Cambridge, Portland, Boulder, Evanston, Seattle, Salt Lake City. And it's also used internationally and has been used internationally for centuries in places like Australia and in places like Ireland. We know ranked choice voting works, and it's straightforward. Voters have the option to rank candidates in order of preference, first, second, third, fourth, however many candidates there are. We rank things every day in life. We rank, you know, whether, what kind of ice cream we want if our partner goes to the store. We rank, you know, our preferences for a multitude of things. What kind of food you want if they run out of the food that you, you know, your first choice. You get your second choice and your third choice. And it ensures that whoever is elected on the candidate side has the majority support of the electorate. This is about making sure that we are building, that we are building a better democracy by electing candidates who are able to build a broad majority of support, who are not just speaking to their base, who are not just speaking to extremists, but who are doing the work necessary to build broad coalitions and to represent everyone in a district. With RCV, voters can sincerely rank candidates and know that whoever is elected is, has the majority support of voters. I like to give the example of, let's say you have five people running a race. There are four people who are dog lovers, and there's someone who is a cat lover. The people who are dog lovers end up splitting their vote among the different dog lovers, and you end up getting the cat lover who wins, when it's very clear in that district that the majority of residents, although they have different opinions on the type of dog, they prefer a dog. And so ranked choice voting is making sure that we are able to build consensus and that it's not just the winner takes all. If the winner takes all at 21% or at 30%, that's not really doing the work of democracy. And I know people will say, "Oh, what we have is good, it's working." It's like, I agree. I now won my first election, and I won reelection without ranked choice voting. And I still believe that this is better and gets us closer to the work of democracy. I have firsthand experience with this when I was working as an attorney, worked on Maine's first congressional race that, the country's first federal race that used ranked choice voting. And I reviewed the ballots, and in reviewing the ballots, I saw what I think is the intuition, that people understand what it means to rank, to rank. And so surveys in RCV jurisdictions indicate that voters were able to clearly and easily understand RCV. In 2020, in 2022, 85% of Alaskan voters found RCV simple. In New York City's 2021 primary, 95% of voters reported that the ballot was simple to complete. What is the proposed change for Boston elections? The only change to the preliminary election is to advance four candidates to the general election for mayor and council district seats. When voting in these preliminary contests, voters will still pick just one candidate for district and for mayor. For at-large, voters will still pick up to four candidates, and eight will still advance. And then when we get to the general election, that's when we start to rank. If there's a candidate who has achieved more than 50% of the vote for their district or for the entire city, no ranked choice voting, because the election did what we wanted to do, was reflect that more than 50% of the voters support your, support that candidate. You can also think of ranked choice voting like instant runoff voting. The change in the general election is one that voters will be able to understand. And, you know, we've now had the Elections Department before us on this working session twice this year. We had a hearing just on the elections two weeks ago, and yesterday they were before the City Council again, talking about the work that they've done since last year, when we know last year was a high turnout election. Presidential and gubernatorial elections can be a high turnout election. I pray for the day when we, at the city level, get a turnout in the same way that we get at the presidential level and at the gubernatorial level. I pray for that day, because that will be, mean that we've done an excellent job of voter education and voter turnout at local elections. I believe that this will help us get there, that this will help us educate people and get more, people more excited about voting. So often, people don't vote because, "Oh, my vote won't matter." When you rank candidates, your vote has a stronger chance of mattering. And I think that, you know, the Elections Department has talked about the work that they're doing. There's a designee there from the Secretary of State's office. And we see it now through the budget, that there are greater investments in the Elections Department, in upgraded technology. This is something that they would be able to implement. There's also a lot of built-in time in this home rule petition to make sure that we get it right, that the Elections Department gets it right. And look, I know this is a policy issue, and people don't, you know, things that are new are often looked at with some sort of trepidation. Maybe I would feel differently if I didn't have firsthand experience working on a ranked choice election and seeing that voters understand it and seeing that it can net better results. And so I understand that, you know, sometimes there will be policy disagreements, but I really do encourage us to look at this as a really great opportunity. We saw in 2021, this was a statewide ballot measure, that Bostonians overwhelmingly supported it at 62%. And I believe we can continue to move this work forward. I am encouraged by the conversation that we've had. I'm encouraged by the incredible coalition that Ed Shoemaker built alongside so many people, Lawyers for Civil Rights, Mass Vote, Jewish Community Relations Council, Veterans for All Voters. Thank you for all the work that you do and that you show up every single day. You know, Ed cannot be with us here today, but for the Coalition members, Doug and everyone else who is here, thank you for being here with us. And this is just the beginning. There are other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth that have ranked choice voting, and we will continue to make sure that voters are educated and they understand that we are doing this to support the work that they started, voters started in 2020, and continue to build a stronger democracy. I also want to, of course, thank my co-sponsors, Counselor Mejia and Counselor Santana, for all of their work in really building this multiracial, multi-neighborhood coalition of people supporting ranked choice voting. They will speak to their own experience of why they believe that this is important. I think this is important for the city, for democracy, and I really do encourage my colleagues to vote in support of this home rule petition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to Counselor Louie Jean, President Counselor Louie Jean, for shepherding us through this process. I am proud to stand here, to bring along standing this effort to the finish line. For years, we have been working to implement ranked choice voting here in the city of Boston and move forward with a shift that is rooted in the belief that our elections should reflect the full voices of our communities. It is a time marked by deep mistrust right now within our institutions, and it has been now more than ever more urgent to give voters a pathway to leadership that is representative, responsive, and accountable. I remember in 2021, working alongside Ron Bell, under his leadership. We were the only municipality in the entire state that sent a resounding message that we wanted ranked choice voting here in the city of Boston. And this is just a continuation of that work. I want to thank other leaders like Cheryl Crawford, Doug Chavez, Tanisha Sullivan, Rosanne Hall, Marisol Santiago, and I want to uplift those names in particular because there is a narrative that this particular effort is rooted in, in just white progressive liberal standards. But in reality, when we think about who stands to benefit most, I want to uplift this, people of color who have often been marginalized and disenfranchised when it comes to our vote. So I want to thank those leaders of color who have stood in the gap in supporting this initiative, this go-around. Ranked choice voting pushes back on systems that limit the people to choose between one or another and instead provides a full menu of options. And everybody knows we like options, which they deserve. It promotes consensus, not division. It ensures that the leaders who rise to represent us not just are the loudest or the best-funded, okay, but those who have the broadest and the deepest support across our communities. This is how we build government that truly reflects the people. I want to thank the Council President Louie Jean for her strong leadership in this space and my fellow co-sponsor, Counselor Santana, for standing alongside us in this work. And a big shout out to the Chair of Government Ops, Counselor Coletta Zapata, for shepherding us through this entire process. Let us be clear. This idea did not start with any one of us. It came from the people. From day one in our office, we have been committed to a co-governance model, making decisions about the people with the people. Today is another example that when we step to the side and let the people who are living the realities and are doing the work lead, things can get done. So shout out to the Rank Choice Boston Coalition and all those who have been holding us accountable and serving as key thought partners to get us to where we are today. And I just want to acknowledge there is an organization called the Ani Institute, and they have a quote that says, "The people don't know their true power." I'm going to say that one more time. The people don't know their true power. And this is an opportunity for us to give the people back their power. And so I'm standing in solidarity and really grateful to see this come up for a vote and look for a favorable response from all my council colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and really want to thank Council President Ruthie Louie Jean and Counselor Mejia for including me in this. And want to thank Chair Coletta Zapata for shepherding us through this process. Today, I'm proud to stand in support of this home rule petition to bring ranked choice voting to Boston. Ranked choice voting gives people more voice, more choice, and more confidence in our elections. It allows voters to fully express their preferences without fear of wasting their votes and helps ensure that the candidates who win truly reflect the diverse values and priorities of our communities. For a city as dynamic and diverse as Boston, we should be leading the way on electoral reform and strengthens civic engagement and increases representation. Once people understand how ranked choice voting works, they see how it simplifies our elections, encourages coalition building, and promotes a more inclusive democracy. This isn't about favoring one group or a party. It's about making our democracy work better for everyone. I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of this home rule petition, and I urge my colleagues to join. I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of this homo petition and I urge my colleagues to join me in voting in support of this. And I know that, I just want to give an extra shout out also to the coalition partners who are here with us today and to those who are watching from, watching us online. Like Councilor Mejia said, this came directly from community and I'm proud to stand with both my at-large and shady counselors in doing just that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before I begin, I do want to highlight, residents have also asked us about an elected school committee. And we haven't taken any action on an elected school committee. Voters clearly said to us, to the city council, will you act and support a school committee? And what is our response? The silence is deafening. Residents of Boston, in my opinion, want an elected school committee, more than, more than they want ranked choice voting. I was with Councilor Santana last night at a community meeting in South Boston. There was 20, 25 people there and if there's one person that supported ranked choice voting. With all the, all the issues we're facing, I don't believe the people of Boston are urgently asking us to change our voting system. What I hear is, Ed, why don't you fix public and pedestrian safety? I was at the Boston Common today. Hey, Ed, we want more police and resources in downtown Boston. What about resident parking, affordable housing, the cost of living, supporting small businesses? What the residents want us to focus on is delivering basic city services and addressing quality of life issues. Well, elections are basic city services. And we know, at the last election, the election department didn't do their job. We know at 5 o'clock, the Boston police in their lights and sirens had to take ballots from City Hall and drive them to voting locations in Mattapan, in High Park, in South Boston. It was so bad that residents in the South End, especially elderly people, had to go to the Cathedral High School where I went with my wife. The lights weren't working in the polling location. They were telling the residents that wanted to vote to use your cellphone light so you could read the ballot. Some residents, some wonderful residents of the South End actually went home and brought lamps into the Cathedral High School so that their neighbors could read the ballot. Polling workers, wardens were calling City Hall. Those calls went unanswered. I called personally, I called the election department from, from the Cathedral High School, talked to Secretary Galvin. I did my due diligence. I called the secretary. Then I called for a hearing with Council Murphy. I advocated for, for state receiver, receivership. I asked for implementation and changes. I came to this budget meeting on the election, listened to the entire debate, advocated for more resources for the election department. Most of my colleagues weren't there at that debate. And the election department pretty much told me that they don't want to see this implemented. They don't believe now is the time to make such a dramatic, significant change to how people vote. I listened closely, Councilor Coletta, and I thought you did a wonderful job. I would have a very difficult time explaining that process to my constituents in, throughout District Two. Many of them don't speak English. Many of them live in public housing. Many of them are seniors, English language learners. I would not be comfortable explaining that entire process to them in such a clear way to explain it in one minute so that they can completely understand the process. I don't want to set us up for failure. That's what we're doing if we vote today to implement ranked choice voting. Yes, there's an election coming up. Yes, people want to support ranked choice voting. It helps them politically. I understand that. But at some point, we have to do what's best for the residents of Boston and provide them with the, with the positive leadership that they elected us to do. We know this system is going to fail. The election department told us it's going to, that they're not able to implement it. Let me continue. We cannot normalize the failures that took place in November. In the biggest presidential election of our lifetime, we had citywide ballot shortages, long delays waiting for additional ballots, incorrect ballots, English-speaking, English speakers needing to use Chinese ballots in the South End, neighbors voting by flashlight, as I mentioned. Poll workers weren't able to reach the election. The Secretary of State had to send someone to City Hall. If this isn't a failure, I don't know what is. How can we add more complexity to the Boston Election Department? Are we setting them up for failure? That's the question we have to ask ourselves right now. We are. On the policy side, there were delays with ranked choice voting in Alaska. In New York City, the Board of Election mistakenly included 135 test ballots in the results in the mayor election before realizing the mistake. My friends, voting is a civil rights issue. I represent a large immigrant population, English language learners. An option to rank candidates and add complexity can potentially confuse residents and lead to voter error. This change will be harmful to them. In the final analysis, when residents across the political spectrum are concerned about our election process, the last thing we want to do is to add confusion with the system. It is all more critical that we maintain the faith of all neighbors in our electoral system and democracy with the process that enhances participation. Let's fix our current voting system first. Let's not set up the Boston Election Department for failure. Let's support them. I want to move on from that election from last year. And the way I move on from that election from last year is to fix what, what happened. Fix the many problems that we have. We can't downplay that. That's not our job to downplay it. Our job is to fix it, to advocate for our residents, to provide the best election day process that we possibly can. Ranked choice voting is not the answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I want to start by thanking Chair Coletta Zapata for what I believe were thorough hearings and working sessions. Thank you for that. Just last month, many of my colleagues argued that if a special election was to happen in District Seven, it would be confusing to the voters, it would be burdensome and expensive to the election department.
Excuse me, there will be no disturbances from the public. Thank you. Council Murphy, floor is yours.
Thank you. And I do think, especially when we're taking votes that will change the laws, especially ones that will change how we vote here in the city of Boston, that it's important that different opinions are able to stand up and speak and take as much time as they need to. This is important. But I believe that, you know, why is ranked choice voting, for some reason, we're not using the same arguments to our voters? So that is a bit confusing to me. But I do believe that our current system is simple, clear, and ensures that every vote counts. Adding ranked choice voting would introduce unnecessary complexity to the process, confusing voters and potentially disenfranchising those already marginalized, particularly seniors and residents whose first language isn't English. At a time when we should be working to make voting more accessible, and what Councilor Flynn did speak to, thank you, on also supporting our election department who needs our support right now, I do believe that it's a time when we should be working to not make voting less accessible but in more complicated. And I believe that this proposal will move us in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The chair recognizes Council President Louis Jean. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to just say one thing very clearly because we had two sessions at least where we talked about this and people can go review the record. Commissioner Tavares stated that if ranked choice voting were to be implemented in the city of Boston, the elections department is, will be ready and able to move forward with it. And I just wanted to make sure we reflect the record of what was accurately stated by Commissioner Tavares about ranked choice voting. Did not express an opinion as to ranked choice voting, but in the work of implementation, her department would be ready to implement ranked choice voting. Our machines right now are able to do ranked choice voting. We need new machines and we, with an upgrade, we can also make sure that we're getting the best software. So just, just to correct the record in terms of what the elections department is able to do and what they stated at the many hearings, many that I chaired and had and we had during budget, what they're able to do with ranked choice voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. Councilor, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the discourse today on changing the structure of municipal elections and moving towards the uses, usage of ranked choice voting. And one thing I was sort of like caught with today is like, why does this conversation make me so agitated? And, or just like feel like, why do I feel so like upset about this conversation? And I think it's because, you know, a year, sorry, 10 years ago tomorrow, I moved to Boston to work in Boston elections. I have worked on every single municipal election since 2015 in some capacity, now myself, trying to get reelected. And I'll just say that I think I disagree with the change of the mentality of our elections. I do think Condorcet elections actually do a good job of picking who would thrive in a head-to-head comparison, where I do think a lot of strategic voting happens when we introduce ranked choice voting. I also agree with the, my council colleague from District Two. I do think having gotten signatures from constituents just recently who speak multiple languages, the barrier to entry in our elections process right now is very high. And adding additional barriers to entry is just a difficult thing for me to stand behind. And I have voted in support of ranked choice voting in other elections before. So I often hear in this conversation brought up, oh, Boston majority voted for ranked choice voting. The majority of Bostonians voted in support of ranked choice voting in different elections, not these elections. This is, in my opinion, a different type of election. While I may support it in theory and potentially for federal offices, I'm specifically against RCV in municipal elections for bodies that have multi-candidate offices and multi-member at-large characteristics concurrently. What that means is, right now, we have a system that works pretty well. We have a preliminary election that gets down to the top candidates and then we have a final election. I think that RCV in this instance is solving for a problem that doesn't need to be solved for. And I'll just say that currently, I don't think there's enough track record in the U.S. to ascertain the effects of RCV on voter turnout for municipal elections. And that's been a constant thing through this process that has been pushed forward, is that it would increase participation. That, I don't think that evidence is there. In fact, this past November, no major city with similar, or a similar structure of elections to our municipal elected body had RCV. Washington DC did recently adopt RCV, but hasn't had any elections since then. I would like to see a track record of how participation and information environment changes, or it does not, in other jurisdictions before making Boston a guinea pig for this. And again, I know we're having this conversation on the council floor, but I've talked to my State House colleagues. I'm one of the few people who has two very important members representing parts of my district. This has no future at the State House. It, it doesn't have a future at the State House. So I'm not against us having this conversation. Our job is to have this conversation, but I think, for me, as someone who's worked on every single Boston election since 2015, rain or shine, I just, I'm wholly against this. I have a lot of constituents who reach out to me in support. I have a constituent who's here today. I feel really bad having a difference of opinion from really well-meaning, smart, educated folks in my district. And so it pains me to have to speak on the council floor about something that will not happen whether we vote on it today or not. But I need to make my position known as someone who has been at the doors requesting a vote for an at-large counselor. And I know how complicated it is. I know how those conversations have gone. I've knocked thousands and thousands of doors in Boston. And I know we all have, but me in particular, I, there's not anyone on this council that's worked on more municipal elections than me because that was my job before I got here. And I'm against this. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Counselor, the floor is yours.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I don't necessarily want to go back and, and correct the record that was corrected by one of my colleagues, but I listened closely and carefully to the election department and talked to them after. I, I was at every single hearing. And we all know that they're not able to implement ranked choice voting. We know that. I, I don't want to go back to the 2024 election on what happened, but district councilors know what happened because district, excuse me?
I'm going to act this final warning. Any more, further disturbances, we will have you removed from the chambers.
District councilors know what happened in 2024. We received the calls from our constituents. Maybe they don't want to speak about what happened in their particular district. It's not good to criticize the administration. I understand that. But what this is about is standing up for our constituents that didn't have access to a ballot. One woman left after one hour waiting in line and she said to me, Ed, I have to go home because I have a special needs child at home. I need to provide support to my child. I received calls from the elderly, like, like all my district council colleagues have and probably at-large as well. Elderly people waiting in line for an hour and they said, I can't wait any longer. I have to get home. Persons with disabilities waiting in line, not for five minutes, not for 10 minutes, for a couple of hours, waiting for a ballot to come from downtown Boston to Mattapan. And we're afraid, we're afraid to speak out about that? We know the system is broken. What's important is for us to acknowledge the system is broken and to fix it. But to deny it and to, to gloss over it as if there's no problem and let's go on to something bigger and better and more progressive, that's not the answer. That's not what our constituents want. They're looking for us to provide positive leadership during difficult votes. And I'm glad we're having this conversation and it gives every city councillor an opportunity to speak whether you're in favor of it or you're against it. And I'm glad no one is shutting the conversation down because that's our job is to speak on particular issues and let residents know exactly where we stand, whether you support something or you're against something, but not that you want to end the conversation immediately. But I, I would recommend to my colleagues, if you honestly think the city of Boston election department is capable of implementing ranked choice voting right now, then, then vote for it. But if you really believe the city of Boston is unable to do ranked choice voting after what happened in 2024, the what happened in 2024, the answer is pretty clear. It's either politics or do what's in the best interest of the city of Boston. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank my colleagues for this robust opportunity to be fully expressed, so I really do appreciate it because that's what we're here to do, to deliberate and fight and stand up for what we believe. And so I appreciate the opportunity to do just that round two. So I want to be clear, and I just kind of want to just level set just quickly here. And so as someone, and now I'm going to put a little bit of rank in terms of experience. So I started off my career working with young people, but then I had the opportunity to go work at MTV in 2000, and I was able to travel across the entire country trying to get young people to understand their power. And what I heard across the country is that they did not feel seen or affirmed or reflected in the people who were running. And that was 25 years ago. And so while I may have not a lot of experience in municipal elections, from a national perspective, I've dedicated my entire career since then to activating people to understand their power. And I came back to Boston, and I established a volunteer-led initiative to get people of color engaged in municipal elections because local politics matter. 10 years later, the same sentiment that I heard on the national level was happening here locally. Residents did not feel that they were being seen, heard, or affirmed, and the people who were running did not represent them or their issues. And so for me, when I think about my little one-vote win, because it was very traumatic, I believe that that election really proved that people who are under resourced can have the opportunity to walk into this chamber and represent folks and fight for the things that you and I and everyone who comes into this chamber fights for, our constituents. So the potholes, the violence, all of those things change when people who are in this chamber live the realities and fight for it. And that's why I think ranked choice gives us the opportunity to restore trust in our electoral process. Because right now, those with the biggest bank usually have the greatest opportunity to run a successful campaign and win. This gives us an opportunity to level the playing field for folks who are often underseen and unheard. And so I just want to acknowledge that as an immigrant, whose language is, my native language is Spanish, and who grew up with a mom who never even made it beyond the third grade, I have to believe that people are able to understand what it looks like to pick the people that they like. It is simple. It is simple. And to think that we can't do that feels disrespectful. And so I want to uplift that people can and will be able to demonstrate their political will and decide who are their top choices. I think, you know, to say that, that we can't do it makes me, as an immigrant and a non-English speaker, feel like I don't have the capacity to pick people to represent me, and I want to reject that notion. And so I just want to affirm that we can do this, and I know that change is really scary for some folks, but we're in a moment that changes what the city needs. We can continue to do business as usual and believe that we're going to have the representation that we all have been literally dying for. So with that, I'm going to reaffirm my strong support for ranked choice voting. And for me, it's not about politics because I always say I love my job, but I don't need it to do the work. And so for me, the votes that I take are because those are my values, not because I'm getting any political points from anybody. So I want to, I want to reject that motion and that notion that this is political theater because it's not for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the advocacy coalition. I see a very familiar face, Bill King. Shout out. Bill has been working on this issue for years. Everywhere he goes, he's there with this clipboard, talking about ranked choice voting and how to choose your ice cream or whatever else you want to choose. I'm from Northern Ireland, and one of the things that characterizes our politics, or historically characterized our politics in Northern Ireland, is the deep sectarian divide and polarization in our electorate, very similar to what we see in the United States today. And Northern Ireland and Scotland, in the 2022 elections, they had a thing called proportional ranked choice voting, which we, they call it a single transferable vote. It's the same concept, but nearly 3 million voters went to the polls in Northern Ireland and in Scotland in the local elections. Both contests demonstrated the promise of a single transferable vote, known in the United States as proportional ranked choice voting. In Northern Ireland, the proportional representation, ranked choice voting has helped to bridge sectarian differences between nationalists and unionists, while in Scotland, it has helped to ensure fair representation. Both jurisdictions offer case studies on how the United States would benefit from passing such a law to have ranked choice voting. And I think really what it forces people to do is to sort of take more extreme elements on either end of our political spectrum. It forces each party, because we work on a party system over there. In Northern Ireland, Sinn Féin won the most seats and will be entitled to oppose as the first minister after winning 29% of the first preference votes nationally, which translated into 27 out of 90 seats. The party was once the political wing of a militant provisional Irish Republican Army, the Irish Republican Army, but in this campaign, it focused less on the questions of national identity and more on the kitchen table issues like the cost of living and the National Health Service. And it's really about focusing on the issues, and I don't think any of us should be afraid of ranked choice voting because if we're really relating to the broadest number of people in our electorate and talking about the issues that really matter to them, we shouldn't be afraid of ranked choice voting. And I think the issue that discourages people from voting in our elections is that if you have a field of candidates and you have somebody that you really like because of their, whatever position they hold on a certain issue, and you want to vote for them, you, the notion of the wasted vote is very prevalent. And in ranked choice voting system, that wasted vote, you make your statement, you vote that that's somebody that you like and you want to support the particular issues they stand on, but if you have, if you then rank somebody as your second choice, if your first choice doesn't make it, then your second choice, that vote gets transferred to your second choice. And I think that's a way to really keep more people engaged, and it's also a way to build consensus across our political body here in the city, but nationally. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we had ranked choice voting across the country? We would have a much more civil discourse. And I think it's a way to build consensus and to really lift up those people who feel disenfranchised and on the margins of our society, that they have a voice in this process and that they will feel empowered to vote more and really help change how we discuss politics here and really get down to the business of the people instead of this sort of back-and-forth fighting that we see across the country. So I am obviously voting in favor of this. I think it's a good, a good option for us. I fully appreciate that it has to go to the ballot. People of Boston will get an opportunity to vote on this, and we're not going to introduce it next week. We have, we have, we have a runway. We have a timeline that this will be introduced on. So this is not something that's going to happen. And I fully endorse the notion that our Elections Department needs more resources. They used to have 30 people. They're down to 20 now, and they're doing a lot. They're not just doing organizing elections. They supervise, supervise the census. They do a lot of work that is behind the scenes, is unrecognized. So I'm a great advocate for also fully funding our Elections Department so that they can do this job and do it well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppin. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And for me, I am one of the district counselors that had some issues in my district. I was actually out there with Counsel Mahia, helping voters, telling them to not leave the line, to stand strong. And I also recognize that our Elections Department does need help, and we just had their budget hearing, what was it, yesterday or two days ago? We learned that they're getting ready to implement new changes as well and to give more investment into the department. But I don't think that because of the struggles that they experienced last year, it shouldn't take away from the opportunity for us to explore and consider ranked choice voting. I am, I'm a big believer in making things fair and making sure that voters in our city and even across the nation just have the opportunity to choose someone that they identify with. And I was able to find something that I, that I really appreciate here from organizers, and I'm going to read it. Says that, "It empowers voters with more choice. It eliminates the fear of wasting a vote, and it ensures that winning candidates have real majority support. This means more legitimacy, more accountability, and more collaboration, qualities we urgently need in our leadership." When I hear these things, I think about, even when, I'm running for office right now, and we all know that, we looked at, we look at the precincts and the wards, voter turnout, which ones come out to vote more. This will take away from that because this will make elections more broadly fair, it's going to make us work even harder, it's going to make us reach voters where they don't usually reach that. People that don't usually come out to vote are going to have the opportunity to say, oh, yeah, I've met this person, I'm going to consider them for a vote. But it's also going to open up the opportunity for those that haven't been able to run for office before and say, I actually have a chance at this. I was at Binka High School this morning, and a room filled of students of Haitian, Cape Verdean, Dominican, Filipino, someone from Jordan, and someone from Pakistan. And every single one of them asked me, you think I have the chance of running for office? And I said, you do, but I think ranked choice voting makes it even more of a possibility for them to become elected official because these people don't come from, I mean, they say themselves, they don't have what we call the background or the pedigree to run for office. And I think that we should give this a consideration. Counselor, you mentioned that this will potentially die in the State House. I say, let's give them the chance to debate it. Let's give them the say to do that. I say, if we vote to support this today, we know it's not going to be implemented immediately. State House is going to have to vote, and people are going to have to vote, and let's move it forward today. That's why I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Peppin. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. If everyone that can vote in this city actually voted, I don't think we'd be having this conversation. There was 100% folks voting that could. So I'd like to take this moment to stress that to be seen and to feel heard, to feel seen and heard, voting is the single most important tool we have in our democratic process. And so I encourage everybody, no matter which, how the election works, to please come out and vote because that is the only way to be seen and be heard. But there is a majority of the city that has obviously chosen not to vote, right? When we look at the numbers from the electoral process, that is the choice that they ranked first, that they would choose not to vote. And so I disagree with changing the democratic process just to appease those that choose not to participate in it and therefore look forward to the vote. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. The floor is now yours.
Okay, I guess I'm not going to call out another counselor, but looking at the same data, I reach a different conclusion respectfully. You know, I think when, we were talking in the hearing with the Elections Department, when Mayor Ray Flynn, you know, was elected in 1983, 70% of Boston turned out for that election. In the last few mayor elections, it's closer to 30%. And I think as Counsel Worrell and I were reviewing some of the data, while 30% come out to vote, even fewer people even vote for the city council. They're voting for mayor, they leave the rest blank. This is a way to increase participation. People are showing up. We want them to participate in votes for the city council, and this is one way to do that. And while I think that, you know, majority rule is not always the way to go, we have to defend the rights of everyone. Here, where the voters of Boston are encouraging us to use a form of voting for our office, you know, we should weigh that as a factor, and I do look at that as another reason why we should support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I know I was long-winded, so I'll be short. I think for the exact same reasons that folks are proposing ranked choice voting for Boston are the reasons and the facts that I'm bringing to be against it. I think in the 2021 primary, right after New York City put this forward, lower-income communities were less likely to use ranked choice voting. Lower-income communities showed less engagement with ranked choice voting in their first New York City primary. While 90% of Democratic voters used it to pick a nominee for mayor, an economic divide emerged between those who adopted the practice fully and those who did not. And the wealthiest boroughs were the ones in the first election in New York to use ranked choice voting. And there are, and I, I don't want to go and correct, you know, every single, you know, one of my colleagues' statements, but I think I said it really well when I spoke earlier, we would be the first election to happen with a multi-member district, multi-member at-large districts. That, New York has installed, I mean, Washington, D.C. has installed this but has not yet had an election. And there are a couple examples that were used by my colleagues that, that it's not like for like, they're not similar to our elections. So it just, while other places have used it, while other people have some familiarity from different places with ranked choice voting, Boston is unique, and our elections are historic, and the way that we do elections here are historic as well. And I, I understand, I understand why people would say that ranked choice voting is a good idea. I personally have witnessed a lot of really large congressional elections where there were 20 people running, where people have multiple people they like and they don't know how to get there. On this body, we are nonpartisan. We are elected in a nonpartisan manner. So the, the threat of not being able to choose in your democratic primary of like the options you want to choose, I understand that problem, and I do think there is definitely an argument for that problem to be solved. That is not the problem we're solving here. So I just think there's less evidence to produce that this would be a good choice for Boston, so I will be voting no. And, but I do respect my colleagues. This conversation is a conversation that we should have. I personally am against advancing it to the State House because, again, I actually think their elections are more likely to be helped by this than our elections. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to go on record because I've heard it many times today and through this whole debate process over the last few months, but I do not believe any vote cast is ever wasted, even if the person, the candidate you voted for doesn't win the election. And I don't believe you should get a backup plan if your first choice loses. And I think we should be proud of who we voted for and stick by them, and our, my, I take it responsibility to engage more people to vote. If 20% of the people come out in the city of Boston, we're considering that kind of a high turnout nowadays, and there's some districts who are less than 5%. So I'm going to focus more on encouraging those who have the ability to vote to get out and let their voices be heard, but I don't want, I want to just be clear that any vote cast shouldn't be considered wasted just because the candidate didn't win.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just one quick final clarifying point. The earliest that we could potentially implement this is likely 2028, 2029. We're talking about signature from the mayor and then going up to the State House, the end of their legislative session is next year, and then signature from the governor, and then from there goes on to the next elections ballot and then doesn't take effect until 365 days after that. So we're looking at 2028, 2029, likely. And so I just wanted to clarify some points about some cities not adopting this and wanting to see it happen. We will have the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else looking to speak? I'll just take the opportunity to offer just a few brief remarks. First, I want to just thank Madam President, Counsel Mahia, and also Counsel Setana for their work on this and all your leadership. I also want to just thank I also wanna just thank the Chair for your thorough process on bringing this forward. I do believe in democratic reforms, and I support the principle that voters should have more to say who represents them. If our goal is to boost voter turnout, a goal I wholeheartedly support, then I believe this, along with voter education, clear outreach, and operational readiness will get us there. I believe that the struggles of the past shouldn't be a reason we don't strengthen our democracy, and perceived obstacles in the future shouldn't stop us from doing the right thing in the present. So I believe this does, this ordinance does strengthen our democracy, but let's continue to invest in proven tools that increase in voter engagement and voter turnout. With that, the Chair of the Committee looks for, seeks acceptance of the Committee report and passage of docket number 0144. Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0144. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin.
No.
Counsel Durkin, no. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald.
No.
Counsel Fitzgerald, no. Counsel Flynn.
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Steve.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
No.
Counsel Peppin.
Yes.
Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 0144 has received eight votes in the affirmative and four in the negative.
Thank you. I know it's a celebration, but please, no clapping in the chambers. Thank you. The Committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0144 has passed in a new draft. Mr. Clerk, can you, we are now on to matters recently heard. Mr. Clerk, can you please read dockets number 0822 through 0845?
Docket number 0822 through 0824. Orders for the fiscal year 26 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the school department and for other post-employment benefits, also known as OPED. Docket numbers 0825 through 0827. Orders for capital fund credited appropriations. Docket numbers 0828 through 0830. Orders for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements. And docket numbers 0831 through 0845. Orders authorizing limits for departmental revolving funds, including law, tourism, arts, culture, environment, Boston Centers for Youth and Family Schools, and police and other budget-related dockets.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Also, I encourage my colleagues to stay in chambers at the moment. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means has held a robust series of hearings tied to docket 0, docket number 0822 through 0830, and docket number 0838, offering a closer look at the proposed FY '26 investments and priorities. Before we jumped in, we've clocked 77 hours, 43 minutes, and 39 seconds across 35 hearings and working sessions so far. A lot of ground covered and more to go. None of this would be possible without the dedication of my team, central staff, council colleagues, and their teams, IGR, and everyone else working behind the scenes. On Thursday, May 8th, at 10:00 a.m., the Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing to review the FY '26 budget for the Boston Public Health Commission to go over infectious disease, child adolescent and family health, violence prevention, and behavioral health and wellness. Presenting on behalf of the administration were Commissioner of the Public Health and Executive Director of BPAC, Dr. Ojukutu, and Director of Budget and Fiscal Compliance for BPAC, Director Valdez. Counselors in attendance included Counsel Flynn, Braden, Fitzgerald, and Murphy. At the hearing, BPAC presented updates on core focus areas, including maternal and infant health, violence prevention, mental and behavioral health, infectious diseases, and health equity initiatives. The hearing also covered BPAC's strategies to close life expectancy gaps, address social determinants of health, and sustain critical community partnerships amidst shifting federal funding. The administration outlined a proposed 3% increase to the BPAC budget, driven by collective bargaining agreements, targeted bureau increases, and investments in trauma response and maternal health programs. Counselors raised questions about outreach to unhoused individuals HIV, support for Asian-American residents facing mental health barriers, staffing shortages in public health nursing, pay parity for contracted health educators to better sustain them in their work, and the sustainability of critical programs like the Men's Mental Health Initiatives and alternate, alternative public safety responses. Concerns were also voiced about gentrification impact on health disparities and the financial stability for community health centers post coronary hospital closure. In response, BPAC emphasized ongoing partnerships with local health centers, strategic workforce development initiatives, and the city's proactive measure to prepare for infectious disease outbreaks. The commission committed to enhancing data transparency, expanding cultural competent care, and maintaining services despite federal funding uncertainties. The hearing concluded with follow-up requests for staffing data, budget breakdowns for violence prevention programs, and continued collaboration to address systemic health inequities in Boston's most impacted neighborhoods. On Thursday, May 8th, at 2:00 p.m., the Committee held a hearing to review the FY '26 budget for the Boston Public Health Commission to go over emergency medical services, recovery services, and homeless services. Presenting on behalf of the administration were Commissioner of Public Health and Executive Director of BPAC, Dr. Ojukutu, and Director of Budget and Fiscal Compliance of BPAC, Director Valdez, and EMS Chief Houli. Counselors in attendance included Counsel Flynn, Braden, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Coletta Zapata, Mejia, Counsel President Louie Jean, and the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Peppin. We received a letter of absence from Counsel Santana. The hearing focused on Boston's response to the opioid crisis, mental health, and emergency medical services. Counselors stressed the need for targeted recovery services that bridge the gap between detox and permanent housing, especially for unsheltered individuals. The city continues to invest in workforce training and harm reduction initiatives. However, gap persists in resources for dual diagnosis care, mass health cover treatment, and affordable housing pathways. EMS leaders talked about response times and issues causing them, prompting counselors to push for more paramedic units in East Boston and Charlestown. Concerns were also raised about private facilities using EMS for non-emergency transfers, pulling resources from, from critical calls. Workforce retention, especially for women and people of a color in EMS, was another focus, with calls for better tracking and support. Public testimony strongly supported the expansion for Boston people's response, a non-police mental health intervention model, with the city has faced challenges in finding a partner to scale the program. On Monday, May 12th, at 10:00 a.m., the Committee held a hearing to review the FY '26 budget for the Planning Department. Presenting on behalf of the administration were Chief of Planning, Chief Shen, Executive Director BPDA, Director Bohemis, and Director Chief of Planning, Deputy Chief Quark. Counselors in attendance included Counselors Flynn, Murphy, Fitzgerald, Durkin, Mejia, Coletta Zapata, Counsel President Louie Jean. We received letters of absence from the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Peppin, and Braden. During the hearing, counselors pressed the Planning Department on housing production, affordability strategies, and community engagement. Counselors emphasized the need for hyper-local AMI measures to reflect Boston's neighborhood income gaps, while the department noted challenges in bridging financial gaps for affordable units that still require subsidies. Discussions then focused on inclusionary zoning and developable profits. Climate resiliency was a key focus, with updates on projects like the Charlestown Navy Yard and Long Wharf flood barriers. The department outlined how they were working to secure funding from city, capital, federal resources, and historic preservation funds. In discussion, the displacement of Black families, concerns faced on the increased production of small rental units while family-sized affordable homes remain in short supply. The Planning Department acknowledged the economic drivers favoring smaller units, but reiterated the commitment, commitment to prioritizing larger family-sized units and public land deals and strategic rezonance. On commercial displacement, counselors raised concerns about small immigrant-owned businesses being pushed out as neighborhood squares get developed, redeveloped, and called for better engagement with these communities. On Monday, May 12th, at 2:00 p.m., the Committee held a hearing to review the FY '26 budget for the Department of Labor Compliance and Worker Protections, Law, and the Law Department Revolving Fund. Presenting on behalf of the administration were Corporation Counsel Cedarbaum, Chief of Staff and Policy at the Law Department, Denning, Senior Program Manager for Living Wage and Wage Theft to the Office of Labor Compliance and Worker Protections, Director Mitchell, and Deputy Chief for the Office of Labor Compliance and Worker Protections, Deputy Chief Sugarman Brazin. Counselors in attendance included Counselors Flynn, Fitzgerald, Coletta Zapata, Mejia, Braden, and Counsel President Louie Jean. We also received a letter of absence from Counsel Weber. The administration presented updates on how the Office of Labor Compliance enforces labor standards like the Boston Residents' Job Policy, Living Wage, Violent Wage, and Wage Theft ordinances. Key highlights included the expansion of compliance monitoring, the success of their new real-time dashboard for tracking workforce diversity metrics, and outreach efforts through multilingual safety trainings in partnership with immigrant worker centers. The Law Department overviewed its role in advising city departments, defending the city in litigation, managing public record requests, and leading legal responses to federal actions affecting Boston residents. Counselors raised questions about the BRJP enforcement, particularly around hiring standards, contractor accountability, and the use of compliance data in procurement decisions. They also pressed the Law Department on staffing challenges, diversity in outside council contracts, and the strain of managing high volumes of lawsuits and public record requests. Concerns were voiced about ensuring adequate legal support for free housing, improving ordinance enforcement mechanisms, and maintaining a strong focus on worker protections amid rising federal enforcement actions. Additionally, counselors advocated for better coordination with the Equity Cabinet to enhance diversity and city contrast. In response, the administration committed to expanding the BRJP dashboard to include trade-specific data and developing similar tools for wage theft and living wage compliance. The Law Department acknowledged resource constraints, but affirmed that the proposed FY '26 budget allows for strategic hires. The administration agreed to provide additional data on pending lawsuits, department-specific legal cases, and efforts to diversify outside legal partnerships. Both departments emphasized ongoing efforts to streamline operations, enhance transparency, and ensure Boston policies reflect and protect community needs. On Tuesday, May 13th, at 10:00 a.m., the Committee held a hearing to review the FY '26 budget for the Boston Fire Department. Presenting on behalf of the administration from the Fire Department were the Commissioner Chief Burke, Chief of Operations for Support Services, Chief Marshall, Chief of Operations for Field Services, Chief Ellie, Deputy Commissioner of ANF for Budget, Deputy Commissioner Coyne, Diversity Recruitment Officer, Michael Gaskins, and Counselors in attendance included Counselors Flynn, Murphy, Braden, Fitzgerald, Weber, Durkin, Mejia, Coletta Zapata, and the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Peppin, and Counsel President Louie Jean. The Fire Department discussed their budget for the upcoming year, which is increasing by 1.3%. They also outlined the eight active federal grants that totaled a little over $3 million. They reported that the Fire Cadet Program is moving eight women to the academy, which will increase the total number of women firefighters from 28 to 36. They detailed how the new cadet program is best approved, is the best approved way to diversify the rank of fire, of our firefighters. They also discussed new fireboats, new engines, and ladders. They recently opened Engine 17 in the design of Engine 3, a study of Engine 8's building and multiple repairs at other stations, as well as upgrades and expansions at 155 Rivermore. Counsel questions centered on improvements to firefighters' mental health and physical health, work-life balance, tracking, and working to diversify the higher ranks of the firefighters, overall capital improvements to various districts in the recent fiscal year spikes in overtime, which rose from $36 million in FY '23 to $46 million in FY ' '24, but is on pace to decrease to $40 million FY '25 through the first three quarters. This is a stark contrast from FY '12 to FY '21, when fire overtime was always between $18 million and $28 million. On Tuesday, May 13th, at 2:00 p.m., the Committee held a hearing to review FY '26 budget for people operations in the Election Department. Presenting on behalf of the administration were Chief People Officer and Administrator Officer Chief Lawrence, Executive Director of the Office of People and Culture, Executive Director Hernandez, Commissioner of Elections, Commissioner Tavares, Commissioner of City Records, Commissioner Chung, and Head Assistant Register of Voters, Assistant Register Piamonte. Counselors in attendance included Counselors Flynn, Braden, Fitzgerald, Weber, Mejia, Coletta Zapata, Vice Chair of the Committee, Counsel Peppin, and Counsel President Louie Jean. The People Operations Cabinet detailed efforts to increase diversity in the city's workforce during the past five years, the new code of conduct policy, changes in collective bargaining to hire lower-wage workers, increasing professional development opportunities, reworking job descriptions for high vacancy jobs, and streamlining the hiring process. They hope to implement a new applicant tracking system in the coming year. The Election Department reiterated the changes it has made after the 2024 election, and described how the $750,000 mid-year transfer for the mayor's allocation was done in order to allow for an RFP to put out a bid for new machines. Counselors asked about the code of conduct, the Fair Chance Act, creation of the Director of Diversity Position, residency waiver, and if they granted more liberty for the city's top earners, extending some collectively bargaining benefits like tuition reimbursement to employees' households, as well as retirement eligibility benefits, which are settled on the state level. In regards to the elections, a need for more staff, trucks, and communication was discussed, as was the expansion of the Student Poll Volunteer Program for high school students. And as Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend that these dockets remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you so, for shepherding us through this budget process. I think, you know, we're slowly inching our way there, but the hearings, budget hearings have been really informative, both just on the budget and on the operations of what our city is doing. So thank you so much for being the Chair and for shepherding us through this yet again. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the Chair of the Ways and Means, the important job he's doing, important role he's playing on, on this budget process. I just wanted to add, I know it wasn't mentioned, but one of the concerns I brought up to the administration team that was testifying to the Human Resources Officer that was present is what is the policy for city employees, including city counselors, city council staff, city employees, as it relates to time and attendance? I think ensuring that we track our time and attendance, especially during an election year, is critical. We want to make sure we provide residents with a full day of work and that we're not using any time for political campaigns. This is something I'm going to maybe have a hearing order and encourage the administration to come up with written guidelines for all city employees on what's expected of them if they wanna take a day off to do campaigning, and is there a limited number of hours a person is able to take to campaign for someone? For example, can you take three weeks off? Can you take two weeks off? Can you take one month off to go campaigning for a particular candidate? I would like all of us to know exactly what the rules are, so we're protecting ourselves, we're protecting the body, we're protecting the city, but also, more importantly, that residents do get a fair, an employee that does their job, that gives over 40 hours to the residents of the city. I do think that's an important part of the discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dockets number 0822 through 0845 will remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Just a reminder that lead sponsors have three minutes to speak on a docket, and co-sponsors and other colleagues have two minutes to speak on a docket. Thank you, Neil, for being with us today. Appreciate you. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1057?
Docket number 1057. Counsel Louie Jean offered the following. Resolution recognizing May as Haitian Heritage Month and May 18th as Haitian Flag Day.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jean. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Messy Umpin, thank you. Today, we had Pasakiki do the invocation, we had a performance from KS Dance Studio, and I think really sort of showed the balance of where the community is right now, and I wanna take a moment to say happy Haitian Heritage Month to everyone. Really, Haitian Heritage Month started here in the city of Boston, and the first person to raise the Haitian flag here on City Hall was a former police officer, Eve Danberville. His brother, him- His brother, him and his brother were both veterans of the Vietnam War. His older brother was the first Haitian police officer to be hired by the city of Boston, and he was the second. His brother died of cancer, and he died, actually was killed, in Haiti. But so I just want to make sure that I give my love and respect to the Danberville family and to the people on whose shoulders I stand here as the first Haitian on the Boston, Haitian American on the Boston City Council, but on the shoulders of other Haitian electeds in the Commonwealth such as Marie St. Fleur, who I interned for, was the first Haitian American elected in the Commonwealth, and Linda Rosana-Fouré, former state senator. And so, it's a moment of jubilee for me to come and share and to celebrate my culture, although I was very much born here and in a lot of spaces. When you hear me speak Creole, you all can't tell, but I speak with an American accent. I thank my father, who is here, for all he did for me and my sisters when we were younger to make sure that Haitian culture, that we knew who we were and where we came from, and that we knew how to read, speak, and write Creole. I also know that this is, as I stated earlier, a moment of difficulty, both for those who are back home in Haiti right now with the gangs killing people in Port-au-Prince, killing people outside of the capital. It's a very heavy moment. If you, you know, if you have or constantly interact or interact with Haitian residents here in the city of Boston, just know that it's difficult to come across someone who isn't experiencing a personal loss right now in Haiti in ways that I'm not going to take up this floor to talk about, but it's really, really, really tragic right now, and I want to hold space for that. And I also wanted to hold space for the personal loss that we see happening right now to our immigrant communities that fear what's happening at the federal level. And I also, multiple levels of pain. Counsel Peppin and I, last night, were in Hyde Park talking to community members and residents after the tragic death of the five-year-old Lenz Arthur Joseph. And I was with his parents last night, and it's just an immeasurable pain. And last week, last Thursday, another 14-year-old Haitian American Hyde Park resident died in his sleep, and that family is facing immeasurable pain. So, when I said at the beginning, we're holding space for both jubilee and a lot of pain, I share with you my personal, I know that everyone has their own pain and joy, that they're balancing how to figure out. It's something that I really actively, actively feel. So, I, that won't take away from the fact that I am so proud of who I am and work every day to see true and real liberation in the city, in the country of Haiti. I'm glad that we will be raising the flag on Friday, so please join us at noon when we raise the Haitian flag on City Hall and when we're honoring Haitian Americans and the trades. And hopefully, I will see you on Sunday for the Haitian American Unity Parade led by Pasakiki and Haitian Americans United as we go down Blue Hill Avenue in celebration of the second-largest diaspora per capita, Haitian-American diaspora here and the third-largest by the numbers. Boston is our home, we love it, we contribute to the economy in so many different ways, children in our schools, and it's a moment of celebration even as there's tremendous pain. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppin. Counsel, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to stand in solidarity with our Council President. In District 5, I represent a beautiful and vibrant Haitian community where every day I get to see their contribution to our city, not only my district, and just get, just starting to really work closely with the community and just feel very thankful, getting to learn about their culture and working closely with our Madam President about the things that that community needs, making sure that in these tough times, at a federal level, at a national level, not just here in Boston, that we just, that they have our support. And they know that we are there for them, that Boston is their home, that Boston is welcoming to everybody. So, I just wanted to stand up and show my solidarity and partnership to them, and looking forward to celebrating their beautiful culture throughout this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank Counselor Louis Jen for all that you do for the Haitian community and how well you represent your people. It is seen and deeply felt and appreciated. And I remember when you first entered the scene running for office, and we share an island. The island I used to call Española until you educated me, which is the island of Quisqueya. And was really happy to know that I had someone on the other side of the island who was going to come into this chamber to fight collectively for the people that we love, right? And so, as we continue to honor this moment, I really do appreciate the sentiment around the pain that is, that Haiti is experiencing right now, and I also understand the commitment and the responsibility that Dominican community has to stand in solidarity, step by step, alongside Haiti. So, I just want you to know that as a Afro-Latino, who's always claimed my black roots, even before I was a politician, I've always said, "You are my brother, you are my sister." And so, wanted to just congratulate you for your leadership in this space and how much joy you have brought into this chamber in celebration of your people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Just want to say thank you to Council President Louis Jen for your leadership. I also just want to thank the Haitian community for their continued contribution, whether it's around independence, liberation here in Boston, spiritual leaders, there also are civic leaders, our businesses, our immigration leaders. Just want to thank you for all the sacrifices and contributions that you have made, and I'm looking forward to celebrating with you this Sunday. Anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta Zapata, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber, and please add the Chair? Counsel, yep, I'm gonna deal with that. Counsel President Louis Jen seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1057. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Docket number 105 has been adopted. Move to go to a brief recess?
No, I just wanted my name added.
Oh, sorry. And Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counsel Flynn? I didn't see you. All right, the Chair moves to go to a brief recess. Thank you.
Just a reminder, and this is a final reminder for gentlemen, if there is no speaking in chambers, and so you've been given a warning, if there's any additional speaking, we'll have to remove you from the front chambers. I also just want to correct the record, Mr. Clerk. I didn't see, I should have said I sought suspension and passage. That's why I was putting my lot on for 1057, so I was seeking suspension and passage. Thank you to the Chair for moving for it. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1058?
Docket number 1058, Counselor Coletta Zapata offered the following. Ordinance extraditing the review of coastal resilient projects by amending Article 25A, resilience review, and in the zoning code of the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. You're on the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm seeking substitution of the original docket to change it to a format for a text amendment to the zoning code rather than an ordinance.
Is that motion seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay? The ayes have it. The motion for substitution is allowed. The docket, does everyone have the new ordinance in front of them? Yes? Okay, great. Counsel Coletta Zapata, you're on the floor, and you may continue.
Thank you. Thank you so much to my colleagues. I first want to thank residents of Harbor Towers who brought this to my attention, Norman Meiser, Matt Rubin, Joanne Hayes-Rines, and I also want to thank folks from the administration, Rich McGinnis, Lisa Harrington, who has worked closely with my office, including my Chief of Staff, to try to come up with some sort of solution to the problem that we faced with Harbor Towers simply just trying to fortify their property from coastal flooding due to sea level rise. And so, for folks that don't know, Harbor Towers is directly on the waterfront. It's an old urban renewal process, or excuse me, old urban renewal parcel, and the process that they went through was just mind-boggling, and I really look forward to pushing this through. We'll have a conversation about it. I don't know which committee it'll go through, but look forward to having the residents there to talk about their experience from a firsthand perspective. So, I rise to speak on an issue becoming more urgent by the day, how we prepare Boston's neighborhoods for escalating impacts with climate change, specifically how we remove unnecessary administrative barriers that prevent our constituents from protecting their homes and communities from coastal flooding. This zoning amendment is about urgency, efficiency, and equity. Article 25A of the zoning code governs resilience design review, a critical process for ensuring how new development and retrofits in flood-prone areas are designed to withstand impacts of climate events like storm surge and sea level rise. Right now, the process isn't working as efficiently as it should, especially for property owners who are just trying to do the right thing and protect their property. Let me break down one of the core obstacles, land disposition agreements, or LDAs. An LDA is a legal contract that the city enters into when it transfers public land to a private or nonprofit entity. These agreements include restrictions and obligations, things like affordable housing requirements, open space protections, and specific design criteria. In places like Charlestown, the North End, and the Wharf District, we have many such partials still governed by LDAs, especially those within urban renewal areas. Here's the problem. When a property owner under an LDA tries to make resilience upgrades, say raising mechanical systems or floodproofing a ground floor, they go through planning and ISD, get approval, and then only at the end does legal flag a compliance issue within the LDA. That means that the entire process starts over, costing time, money, and momentum. This article to article, this amendment to Article 25A fixes that. It establishes a resilience review council, a coordinated body made up of planning, urban design, legal, and other relevant departments. Instead of working in silos, they review LDA-governed properties together in upfront before homeowner or developer gets the permitting stage. This will create a clear, predictable, and efficient process. We can't afford more bureaucratic delays when the next storm could be one that displaces hundreds or damages millions of dollars, millions of dollars of infrastructure, and we certainly can't allow our own legal and zoning processes to be barriers to climate justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. Thank you, Counsel Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You're on the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counselor Coletta for bringing this forward. I support this proposal. I'll do whatever I possibly can to support, to support it and to advocate for the Harbor Towers community. I proudly represented them for six years. I know the neighbors well, have a great relationship, they're wonderful people, and just want to say thank you to Counselor Coletta for bringing this forward. I'm jealous that she represents the Harbor Towers because they are such wonderful, wonderful people, and I miss representing them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppin. You're on the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I fully support this because sea level rising is real and it's happening, and I have had the opportunity of sitting down with Christina Schlegel, who is actually my front-door neighbor, and she's Executive Director of the Global Center for Climate Justice for the entire state, and just learning about the serious concerns we have with climate change that we're experiencing here in Boston. I also had the opportunity to host a flooding meeting. Yes, we do have flooding concerns even in Rosin now. We had the Boston Water and Storm Commission come out and have a meeting where we were able to learn that there is an amazing tool called the Boston Inundation Model that you can use if you're curious if there's any flooding concerns in your area. And to my colleagues and to anyone hearing, I also encourage you to watch The Inundation District. It's a documentary based on everything that Boston could potentially see in the near future, but specifically focused on sea level rising. So, this is why I'm in support of this. We got to do more. We need to make sure that we're doing everything possible to protect our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add councilors Braden, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin. Please add the Chair. This docket, docket number, oh, okay, and Counsel Orrell. This docket, docket number 1058, will be referred to Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. And I wanted to also say, Counsel Coletta Zapata, thank you for your leadership in this area, thank you for your work on behalf of the residents. They have also told me how incredibly important this is, so just wanted to elevate, and thank you for all this. Okay, Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1059?
Docket number 1059, Counselor Flynn offered the following. Ordinance establishing a road safety and community engagement commission to regu-
Sorry, sorry, continue.
To regulate the use of bicycles, e-bicycles, motorized bicycles, and motorized scooters in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Across Boston, the city has implemented changes to the transportation system by increasing the amount of bicycle lanes and condensing existing roadways. In the recently published City Transportation Review conducted by Superintendent Broll, a nine-page memo regarding street design changes indicated the city was heavy-handed in recent years in its communication with neighbors, enables. We heard consistent feedback that the project communication and community engagement were inadequate, that decisions seemed predetermined, and that processes too often did not achieve consensus, contributing to a loss of community trust, he said. And I agree with the Superintendent. In District 2 in particular, the impact of the development, implementation, and construction of bicycle lanes lacks a cohesive and effective design. There's no foresight of a comprehensive master plan, causing safety, traffic, and construction issues. That's why I recently called for hearing on transportation planning with Article 80 Development Projects, as the city has now planned for multiple bike lanes to nowhere that lack any connection to a comprehensive network and end abruptly near dangerous intersections. There's one that will be randomly stuck on Dorchester Avenue in front of a hotel project next to Doughboy Donuts, leading into a dangerous intersection at A Street. There's another that was decided after the public process and during the Public Improvement Commission review in front of Em Ryan's Restaurant on West Broadway in South Boston. That comes in direct conflict with the city's South Boston Transportation Action Plan, which the Boston Transportation Department and the BPDA both said would not include bike lanes on Broadway. We have seen cycling-related collisions and crashes increase, including many incidents that go undocumented due to a lack of registration requirements for bicycles, electric, and motorized bicycles, and scooters. Neighbors, especially our seniors who walk around the neighborhood, consistently bring up the lack of enforcement on these two-wheeled vehicles operating on sidewalks, running red lights, going the wrong way, including cyclists that also do not follow traffic rules. They feel unsafe to walk throughout our enables. That is why in February, I also called for hearing, which many of my colleagues here added their name to, that would discuss requiring all micro-mobility devices to be licensed, registered, and insured. I've also heard concerns from other neighbors and businesses about community process on how the removal of vehicle travel lane in certain high-traffic corridors in commercial areas have impacted truck deliveries, the loading of goods and services, rideshare pickups and drop-offs, as well as the impact on small businesses with the loss of parking spots. Again, we removed over nine parking spots on Boylston Street last year. They may not say it publicly, publicly, but I also heard privately from first responders about the need for a better and comprehensive plan when it comes to implementing bike lanes in high-traffic corridors, including on Cambridge Street behind us, as we decrease the road space for cars to move out of the way near the Mash General Hospital. We need a more comprehensive and community-driven approach to developing safe bicycle lanes that take into consideration engineering expertise and advice, safety, infrastructure data, and a legitimate and thorough public process which relies on the institutional knowledge, knowledge, and years of experience from residents, small businesses, and nonprofits. I'm filing this ordinance today on establishing a road safety and community engagement commission to- to discuss how we can better regulate the use of bicycles, e-bikes, motorized bicycles, motorized scooters in the city of Boston. Boston can no longer be the Wild West. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Peppen. Councilor Peppen, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is more of a question to Councilor Flynn through the, through the chair. So when you say the words regulate the use of bicycles, I see what you're saying, but can you elaborate a little bit more on what are you foreseeing for everyone? Because there's a wide population of people that use bicycles. So I'm thinking like, there's even children that use bicycle, there's people that use bicycles that aren't necessarily using it as their mode of transportation. So are you envisioning that they're going to be regulated too?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Peppen, for that question. Also, you directed your question through the chair, but make, in the future, just direct it through the chair as well.
Yes.
Councilor Flynn, if you'd like to respond through the chair, you may.
Thank you, Councilor Peppen, for that question. Thank you, Councilor Peppen, for that question. It's a fair question. It's something I'm going to consider. I have advocated for bicycles to be registered, to be insured as well. I do think they, they should be regulated in some sense. I do see bicycles involved in collisions, and at times I do see unreported collisions with bicycles, and it's very difficult for exchanging papers when someone on a bicycle or an e-bike or a moped doesn't have any identification in terms of a, a way to describe who they are. But having said that, I think it's important to have a conversation about that and to discuss that specific question in a hearing, and I'd like to listen to the pros and cons about why bicycles should be regulated or not regulated. I have an open mind, but I do believe we have to enforce the rules of the road. Traffic enforcement is critical. I was talking about that today at the Boston Common with residents. Boston can no longer be the Wild West. We have to enforce traffic laws in the city regardless of if it's a vehicle, if it's a bicycle, it's an e-bike, a scooter, electric bike. We need to provide a safer and healthier environment for everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank, thank you, Councilor Peppen. You may respond through the chair if you, if you like.
Thank you. Thank you to Councilor Flynn for responding to that. I fully see what you're saying, and I wholeheartedly agree that Boston is the Wild West when it comes to transportation. I've been experiencing very recently in my district and throughout the past year and a half in office where I continue to get that. So I'm fully committed to working on transportation safety, making sure that drivers are, they're not violating the law across our city. But in regards to regulating the use of bicycles specifically, I'm still in, I don't know how to look at this, so I won't be supporting this ordinance, but if you'd be open to having a hearing about this instead, I could support that. And this Friday is Bike to Work Day in the city, so there's going to be a big coalition of bicycle riders in, on the, down outside on the plaza. So maybe that's a good opportunity also to engage with folks and see where they stand. But yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peppen. The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin, and then Councilor Mejia.
Thank you so much, Chair. Anyone who lives in Boston can attest to the huge problem our current transportation network causes to residents, from time lost in waiting in traffic to asthma and cardiovascular illness. But what my colleague proposes today is pausing data-driven solutions that reduce the need for people to rely on a vehicle to move around town. We know that bike lanes have reduced the amount of vehicles in Boston. Data released just last week for 2024 shows a 30% reduction, let me repeat that, 30% of all vehicles moving across the Mass Ave Bridge during the morning rush were people on bicycles. That's up from 20% two years ago. In District 2, summer streets saw an even more drastic change. The rate doubled from five to 10%. And what changed? Boston strengthened our bicycle network. We invested in infrastructure that allows residents and commuters to make a choice not to bring their cars into the city. Now what happens if we create a commission that proposes to pause all transportation improvements? Actually, reading 111204, and that's one, the first is ensure that Public Works Department or any other third party immediately discontinue the construction of all bicycle lanes in the city unless and until a master plan is developed by the commission and approved by the mayor pursuant to this subsection. This is kind of turning back time in transportation in the city. And as our chief of streets stated before the Chamber of Commerce recently, it is a geometry problem because the roads are not getting any bigger. If we want Boston to grow by adding more residents and creating more jobs, we have to realize that we can make the problem much worse by focusing on solutions that first got us into this position. This respectfully is not something that I would be willing to support, and I do think there was recently a, someone hit that I, that I knew by a bike, on a bike, and I just think we should be focused on safety, we should be focused on getting people through our streets safely, we should be focused on individual transportation projects. This, to me, is just too broad scale, and it's not detailed enough. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I am going to make an assumption that this is an ordinance that we will definitely be having a hearing on. I don't think we're going to be suspending and passing and deliberating on this today. I believe there is a process in which we go about doing business here, so I don't think we have to worry about it today, but I get the right to say that. I, I, I think last year when there was the, the incident in where Yusebi Bias was murdered, we hosted a, an emergency town hall around the mopeds and just kind of like the frenzy that was happening in our streets. And Councilor Peppen and Councilor Flynn joined my office in, in shepherding a citywide task force that right now is looking at quality of life issues, and one of the biggest concerns is pedestrian safety. And so I'm happy to hear that you're looking at a more formal structure for folks to have a pathway to be heard, and I also want to honor the task force and the work that they've been doing in partnership in identifying a community-centered approach to dealing with these issues. So I'm hoping that once we have the, the first hearing, we can invite some of the task force members to amplify their voices in the things that they've been doing in, in partnership with all of our offices. So looking forward to that. And then, you know, I was knocked off of a bike when I was a kid. Someone literally sicked a German shepherd on me in, in the seventies, and you, I've shared this story in the past. And so I have a very traumatic experience when it comes to bikes, so I don't really ride them much, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I don't appreciate people who do. I just want to, I just want to name that there seems to be a, an energy that is manifesting in the city where it's people versus bikes, and, and I think that we have an opportunity to really start convening collaboratively and, and everyone taking ownership of, of how we are going to handle the pedestrian problem while also looking at it from a place that communities usually have the best solutions. And I want to make sure that they're also part of the problem, and that I know my time went over. I also just want to name that I don't want to get into the habit of penalizing. It's already hard enough for people of color and low-income people in particular to even have a bike, let alone if you're going to have a bike and then have to register it, and I don't know what that financial cost could be, and I want to be super mindful that bikes are supposed to feel like an enrichment activity, and I don't want to get into the business of penalizing little kids to ride their bikes in the hood.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy, and then Councilor Weber.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm not sure if this is going to be a vote or not. I will find out. That's fine, but I do want to rise to just say that most of, or a lot of our conversations here on this council since I've been here have been around road safety, and we've had tragedy after tragedy in, I think, every neighborhood across the city. And I also believe that cars are responsible, pedestrians are responsible also for making sure they cross in the crosswalk and also are being safe around the roads and the streets and our people on bicycles are. So we share the road, and I do think we share the responsibility for the safety of all, those in cars and those walking, those on bikes. And I don't think it's a bad idea at all to establish a road safety and community engagement commission. I think it would be an important group of people coming together to really look at the, how do we make our streets safer without penalizing any one group of people, how they get along. Many bikers also ride, drive their cars, so I think having this conversation is important, and I also think having a commission that is really looking at. We have many hearings, and I know it's not because the chair doesn't want to schedule them. We have full calendar with budget hearings, but we have many hearings in the Transportation Department on these exact issues about wanting to get the Transportation Department in front of us, the Safety Department, Departments in front of us on how can we ensure and how can we lift up the voices that all of us here across the city, no matter what district you're in, and if you're an at-large councillor, every neighborhood talks about safety on the roads, parking issues, crosswalks, all of this is so important. So thank you for filing this and looking forward to working alongside the administration on making our roads safer for everyone.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Weber. You're on the floor.
Thank you. I, I'm going to join Councilor Peppen in being concerned about requiring children to register or have their bikes registered. I did have a question as we, as we, when we have a hearing on this at some point in the future, and I don't, I don't know if, if, if the filer wants to answer it now or not, I'll ask it through the chair. Just, I, I, I'm also concerned about impact on blue bikes and, you know, it talks about registration, people need to register if that's going to, if there's, I, I have, I, I'll admit I haven't read every word of this, so, you know, if, if it hasn't been addressed, you know, I think going forward, we need to not prohibit people from using a blue bike because they haven't registered it. Just in Section 11-12.05, it says, "Any person operating a bicycle," I don't know if that includes a blue bike. So anyway, I'm just going to, I, I, I'll leave it to the filer if he wants to answer that now, or, or we'll deal with that at the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Flynn, you're on the floor.
Thank you. And again, I respect, respect your question. I think what, what I'm trying to do is for people to come together in a respectful manner and to have a civil conversation about how we can improve pedestrian safety, how we can improve our roads, our sidewalks, because I know what is taking place now is not working. I'm open to ideas from my colleagues, and many people here have excellent ideas. Some ideas are better than, better than what I proposed. I welcome those comments. It makes for a better discussion, it makes for a robust discussion. So I want to encourage my colleagues to continue to be engaged, to continue to ask those tough questions, because that's what we're, we're here for, is to answer questions. But in the final analysis is, I'm not going to sit back and, and allow Boston to continue to be the Wild West. I, I asked about a year ago the police commissioner and Chief Franklin Hodge to address motorbikes, e-bikes, scooters that were, that were running, running amok throughout the city of Boston and to have some type of regulation enforcement on them. The commissioner responded. We have made some progress on that, and I'm, I'm thankful that they, they took my recommendations. This is an issue I've focused on for, for several years. But Boston is not safe for many people walking across the street for, for different reasons. In South Boston, I still see people driving 40, 50 miles an hour through a residential neighborhood. When elderly people, such as, such as my parents, might be in a crosswalk, someone might drive by them going 40 miles an hour. I also see persons with disabilities walking towards the Southie Library, going, going into the, walking on, on the corner of Ellen Broadway, and, and the person with disabilities will be walking across the street in the crosswalk, and someone will go by them 40, 50 miles an hour. I see parents taking their little kids to school. The same thing is happening. Traffic enforcement is critical. I realize we don't have enough police officers in the city of Boston. Most are, many of them are working consistently 16 hours a day. But I've worked and want to continue to advocate for more traffic enforcement from our Boston Police Department. I think that should be a critical part of public safety in the city of Boston, enforcing the current rules of the road, including the, the speed limit. I work to reduce the speed limit. It's at 25 miles an hour now. I think it should be lowered from 25 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour. People will disagree with me, but going 25 miles an hour down a residential neighborhood is excessive, in my opinion. We have to do everything we possibly can to ensure people are safe on crossing in our crosswalks, in our sidewalks, and if this commission is the answer, then, then let's begin. If it's not the answer, maybe there's some recommendations we can take from it that we can learn and implement them into policy in, in the city. But the status quo, I know, is no longer an answer. We have to address pedestrian safety and come up with a comprehensive plan. And the recommendations usually are the best from residents. Councilor Mejia and, and Councilor Peppen, they were listening to residents and myself on Zoom with residents across the city. Councilor Mejia, those residents had great recommendations. Some of them were better than the recommendations we all made. And when I listened to the residents talking about what they advocated for as it relates to pedestrian safety, I said to myself, wow, that's a great recommendation. I didn't think of that. But when you listen to residents and you listen, you listen to their concerns, you get a better and a different perspective in, in, in what, what's important to them, you might not think about, or you might not realize it. So I want to acknowledge Councilor Mejia, Councilor Peppen, for the community engagement they have been doing, and I'm looking forward to the conversation and working with my colleagues. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta Zapata. I've also been very leaning on time here. Councilor Coletta Zapata, I know you haven't spoken on this, so, but just going to get better at keeping time. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta Zapata.
Thank you, Council President. I can appreciate that. One quick thing, just because this is going to come hopefully to my committee, I do have some concerns about preemption issues, like the state and city create certain regulations around bikes and mopeds. From what I could gather, the state establishes laws for operations of bikes and mopeds, so licensing, registration, and general traffic issues. And then the city is more around the enforcement of that. It, with, with nuanced and tailored regs for our city, but it's more around the enforcement and then the community engagement. So I really do look forward to these conversations. I do know that Senator Brownsberger has been looking into this. We, we got a chance to speak with some of our colleagues at the State House who, who have been looking at this, and not just him, but others. So I would want to make sure that they are hopefully involved in the conversation so that we can align with what they're thinking and potentially learn from them in this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. Councilor Durkin, you're on the floor.
Thank you so much, and I know we're going to have a robust discussion, and I know that while my approach might differ from my colleague from District 2, I do think it's really important that my, my approach is actually differing from a lot of people in this very building right now. There are patches of bollards and bike lanes that are disappearing from my district right, right now with no public process. And that's where my anger is coming from on this particular issue. I have a lot of double-parked cars because bollards are just missing, and I'm really upset because there are people who live in my own building, there are people who live on my street who rely on the bike infrastructure that is currently there to get to work, and they're being put in danger by not having protection. I'm really upset, and like, I mean, I can tell you I had a meeting with a constituent, and I was like moved to tears about just how unsafe they feel getting to work, and especially during National Bike to Work Week. It just feels like having this discussion feels just very outdated to the needs of our, my constituency especially. And I'll just say, I know how fraught it is. I know traffic, I know all these things, and like, I do want to come to a solution. And so maybe that means me and my colleague from District 2 having a talk offline about what this means, but people being unsafe on the streets, you know, someone being hit recently in my district. on the streets, you know, someone being hit recently in my district, I just, it makes me really, really upset, and I don't know how to deal with how upset I am about it, other than to say to my council colleagues, we need a connected bike network in the city that moves people around where they are not in peril. And I do think that the conversation in this body should reflect the severity of the statements that were, like, this is serious, this is people's lives. I know I have felt less safe in the past few months than I have ever felt on a bike, so let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counselor Murphy? This docket, docket number 1059, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1060?
Docket number 1060, Counselors Worrell and Calleja Zapata offer the following ordinance codifying the Department of Innovation and Technology.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Calleja Zapata. You have the floor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. You have the floor. Sorry. Co-sponsor is Counsel Calleja Zapata.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to motion for a substitution.
There's a motion on the floor. Is it seconded? Second, all those in favor of supporting the motion to substitute, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion to substitute is before the body.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd also like to suspend the rules and add Counsel President Louie Jean as the original third co-sponsor.
Counselor Worrell seeks to suspend the rules, add myself as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, I'm so added. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
I'd like to suspend the rule and add Counsel Mejia as the fourth original, I know I can't do that, but if I could, I would add Counsel Mejia. This ordinance is a refile from last year. Last year, we held a hearing on this ordinance, where we heard from Chief Garsis in the Department of Innovation and Technology, as well as the CIO from Pittsburgh, South Bend, and Cambridge, who shared best practices on how codifying the IT department strengthened services, service delivery, and data governance. Through those conversations, we were able to streamline this ordinance to reflect Boston's unique needs while addressing the gaps identified in our citywide technology assessment. By codifying the Department of Innovation and Technology, we're future-proofing Boston's ability to manage data, deliver services, and stay responsive regardless of who's in office. Technology is the backbone of modern government, is how we reach residents, deliver services, and make data-driven decisions that tell us where we're falling short and how we can do better. Good governance in the 21st century requires good technology stewardship. An important aspect of this ordinance is the formalization of memorandums of understanding with quasi-independent agencies. These MOUs are critical to improving data access and alignment across all entities that serve Boston residents, ensuring we break down silos and maximize transparency. This ordinance aims to improve government efficiency, increase departmental collaboration, and keep all city employees upskilled and with the technology we need to do our jobs well. When I think about DOIT and how they can best help our city, I keep thinking back to their budget hearing and Chief Garsis talking about the new permanent process they're working on. It will make things easier for the person applying and for city departments. That's the type of immediate progress that I think the DOIT team can imprint on our city, and this ordinance furthers that goal. I want to thank the Chair of Government Ops, Chair Calleja Zapata, her team for their work on this ordinance, and I also want to thank Chief Garsis, Kerry Jordan, Aleah, and the whole entire DOIT team for their collaboration. And I respectfully would like to request a suspension, other rules, and passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counsel Calleja Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to shout out the maker of this, Counsel Worrell, for his leadership and partnership. I want to thank your staff and my staff as well. I also want to shout out Counselor Flynn and Counselor Braden, who were original co-sponsors on a hearing order that I had last year, talking about the technological infrastructure in our city, and from there, we realized a lot of different things that needed to be updated, and just how vital our technological infrastructure is in the city to provide services that residents depend on. And I'm really excited about this. This is a great example of our legislative power and what we could do to just make things run better, run more effectively, and give departments the authority that they need. DOIT right now is simply existing through administrative order. While, you know, we've done this a couple of times, I think that this one in particular is special because its work is such, it's like an octopus. Like, DOIT can now have the authority to integrate technological systems with other departments, and it's just, it's amazing. So, again, I just want to shout out Counsel Worrell for his work. I hope my colleagues will join us in passing this today, and I look forward to continue working with Chief Garsis, who's doing an incredible job, and of course, we all know and love Kerry Jordan, who used to work here with us. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to Counsel Worrell, Counsel Calleja Zapata. I know that this is an issue that all of my colleagues care about, because it's important that we support the work of this office and codify DOIT here in the city. We lost our very own Kerry to DOIT, but it's okay, because he's doing really great work there, as we work to close the digital divide, as we work to make sure that our businesses are able to, you know, apply for permits online. There's so much work that DOIT does or helps with, and I'm proud to stand with my colleagues in codifying their office. Just one note to the makers, that we're just gonna have to update the ordinance, it doesn't have to be motion to substitute, but just to correct the spelling of some of the names in the title. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I look forward to supporting this. This is an issue I've supported and worked on for seven or eight years and have been fully engaged in the DOIT mission in ensuring residents across the city, especially residents living in public housing, persons with disabilities, our seniors, our immigrants have equal access to city services through information and technology. That's critical, and we need to continue to support those residents that really don't, at times, have a voice in government, whether they're in public housing, or they're our seniors, or persons with disabilities, but providing them an opportunity to engage city government through technology is critical. My colleagues have mentioned Kerry Jordan as well. I also want to recognize Kerry, who's a dedicated, wonderful, professional city employee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Also want to disregard, the spelling is correct, so we're fine with the version that Counsel Worrell filed. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the makers. It's really, I'm delighted we're doing this, this is past due. I think one of the important aspects of DOIT is, you know, it's long past the time when we were just using it as a management information system. Management information systems should just do the day-to-day things. This department is hugely important in supporting all of our city departments, all of the other city departments and agencies across the city. But the other important thing right in this moment is the threat of cybersecurity, cybersecurity threats, and DOIT, it's really important that we step it up and support codifying them, make them their own department, and give them the monetary, financial support to have the infrastructure in place to protect us as best we can from cybersecurity threats. And I'm really excited, I think they're doing incredible work, and I will be very, very happy to vote in the affirmative on this one today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber. Counselors Worrell, Braden, and Louie Jean, to expansion of the rules and passage of docket number 1060. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1061?
Counselor Mejia, you have a point of order? Okay, what is your point of order?
Counselor Worrell, Calleja, and Louie Jean, and you said Braden.
I apologize.
So, I just want to make sure for the record and the stenographer and everybody who's listening, that, I'm sorry, I'm trying not to, you know, but I just heard it incorrectly, so I want to...
Thank you. That is corrected, that is sustained, because it is correct. I believe I did say Counsel Braden. Apologies, trudged it to the head and not the heart. That's Counsel Worrell, Counsel Calleja Zapata, and Counselor Louie Jean sought suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1061. So, Mr. Clerk, did you get that correction? Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1061?
Docket number 1061, Counselors Louie Jean and Braden offer the following, petition for a special law regarding an act to the Office of District Counselor in the City of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jean. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor, Mr. Chair. So, this is a home petition, that is the second part of the home petition that we filed a few weeks ago, ensuring that whoever's elected, if there's a vacancy in a district council seat, that that person is seated as quickly as possible after the elections are certified in November. I'm not suspending and passing, because I want to make sure that, I need to make sure that we're talking with the State House in terms of how this moves forward and the things that are currently there, but this is just to ensure that we are doing our due diligence and that we have this in the event that we need to pass this, that we can get whoever's elected in the event of a vacancy seated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else? The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counselor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to speak on this matter as it relates to the status of the District 7 seat. I also think it's important for us as city councilors, during these critical and challenging times, to demonstrate that we are taking steps to regain the public trust with Boston residents I believe that we lost through a series of ethical challenges and legal lapses over the last several years. Integrity, accountability, responsibility must be a top priority for all city councilors. This process begins, in my opinion, with ethics reform, accountability, transparency, work ethic, and positive leadership. I will continue to encourage my city council colleagues to support a comprehensive ethics reform package, including having all city councilors release state and federal tax returns for the last five years, releasing statement of financial interest form to both the state and the public. It's critical that the city council works closely with the Mass State Ethics Commission to provide enhanced training for city council candidates and current staff as well. This may or may not be directly related to this particular docket, but I think it's important for me to weigh in publicly on this potential for a vacancy in District 7. I continue to advocate for establishing a Boston City Council Oversight Commission made up of outside and relevant experts, maybe a standalone ethics committee that was voted down, hiring an attorney to ensure compliance, transparency, and accountability for the body. In my opinion, now is the time for positive and ethical leadership from the Boston City Council. At this time, we have not taken the necessary steps to regain our credibility with the public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what we are proposing here is that we amend the home rule petition that is already up at the State House in the event that, as we did in the mayoral election a few years ago, Mayor Wu was sworn in once her votes were certified, and she took office in November rather than be sworn in in January because of the vacancy. In this moment, District 7 is in the midst of an election campaign, there's many, many candidates who are in meeting with their, with future constituents, talking to the residents in District 7, and, you know, it will be a robust and thorough review and vetting of all the candidates, and the District 7 will choose their best candidate to represent them in this council. So, I think this is just, this is just a sort of an amendment to try and ensure that whomever gets elected in November to represent District 7 will be able to take their seat, whereas the rest of us, if we're lucky enough to be reelected, will be sworn in again in January. So, it's a very small thing, and it's just really to ensure that the elected representative of District 7 will be able to take their seat as soon as possible.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Look forward to this hearing. I will do my homework like I did when the original ordinance was filed, and I look forward to kind of looking, because I know that if I could through the chair to the District 2 Counsel ask, is it true that when you were elected for District 2, there was a vacancy with Counsel, Counselor Linehan, but you were not allowed to enter in the seat early? If I could through the chair asking that.
Through the chair. Counsel Flynn, may I respond if you like?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Counsel Murphy for asking the question. Yes, the district city councilor resigned, I believe in, I believe in October, if I'm not mistaken. He resigned in October, so the seat was vacant basically from October to January. I wasn't sworn in, I wasn't sworn in early, I was sworn in with everybody else. I guess, I guess maybe, maybe could we amend the proposal and make it a generic, a generic proposal where if any seat is vacant, that a city councilor can, can get sworn in early if a person resigns, instead of making it specific towards District 7. Maybe it might happen, again, for different reasons, a city councilor might resign in the summertime maybe, or in the fall, and the seat might be vacant, but maybe it's an opportunity for us to foresee that type of circumstance happening, take action now, and maybe collectively combine them. So, any type of vacancy, for whatever reason, and if a city councilor resigns, maybe having a early sworn-in ceremony for that councilor. Just a thought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
And so, as we know, many people here know that it is different, and I don't think the public is always clear, because many people are asking me, because I did get sworn in early, when Counselor Wu vacated her seat to be sworn in early because Mayor Walsh had vacated his seat. So, it is complicated, and the at-large councils do have different rules when it obviously comes to vacancies, but also swearing in, you have to be replaced immediately, no matter how much time is left on the calendar. So, I think it would be important to have, you know, a larger conversation about the process before we, you know, change any charters, and I do agree that maybe it shouldn't just be a one-off, and I know we obviously can make those changes during the hearing and also when we vote on the committee report, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. The Chair recognizes Counsel Calleja Zapata. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair, and I just want to thank the maker for taking this necessary step in correcting what could be perceived as an archaic rule. The good thing about municipal government is that we have the opportunity to change things that may or may not be working. What worked in 1907 may not work in 2025 or in beyond. This is, I just want to remind folks that this is what we did for mayor in 2021, but I do look forward to the conversation. I presume this will be in my committee, and so I hope for an expeditious hearing, but I just want to say thank you for demonstrating positive and effective leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you. I look forward to more detailed conversation when we, when we, it goes to committee, and that we will try to expedite this process. You know, every cycle, we do something slightly different, and in the instance of when Counsel Murphy joined the council, she came in sixth, but the person who came in fifth didn't decline to take the position as city councilor, and she came in as sworn in, and she came in sixth. So, we have this sort of, almost bespoke sort of approach to the circumstances in every different instance, so I think that we can, this is an important thing to do, and I think we should do it in a timely way, so that whomever gets elected from District 7 will be able to take their seat as soon as possible with the ascent of the, of the folks at the State House, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jean. Counsel, you have the floor.
Yes, and I just wanted to correct something, just so that folks know, that this home rule petition was actually written for any vacancy for this year. So, I think there was, Counsel Flynn made a good point about generally, this is not just about District 7. just about District 7, it's actually about any, any district, any vacancy this year, if one were to arise. So it's very general, it's generally written, but it's applicable to this year. And I do think that there is probably opportunity, not sure if it's now, but for that larger conversation about a change to state law, I think it would be tricky for some of the reasons that Counsel Braden mentioned, but like, how do we ensure that in the event of a vacancy, this is always something that happens? I'm open to that conversation. I think that might be a harder and longer one to have, and to meet the needs that we may have for this year. I think this is important, but it is just generally written, and it is not applicable just to one district.
Thank you, Counsel President. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Just want to thank you for your positive leadership and looking forward to the conversation, but I do agree, I think we have to tackle the situation now and then look forward to the larger conversation on if reform is needed. Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counsel Coletta Zapata, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber? Please add the Chair. Document Number 10, oh, Counsel Peppin, sorry. Document Number 1061 will refer to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Document Number 1062?
Document Number 1062, Counsel Santana offered the following: Order for a hearing regarding occupational cancer risks for Boston firefighters and programs the City of Boston offers or could offer for prevention, diagnosis, and treatment.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry, I'm going to sit down. I'm battling a migraine and standing up and sitting down, it's just a lot for me. But I talked earlier in the presentation that I did earlier about this, so won't spend too much time, but I do want to add Counsel Ad Flynn, and would like to suspend the rules and add Counsel President as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn is so added. Counselor Santana seeks to suspend the rules, add myself as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. I'm so added. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. This is something that, again, that's very personal to me. Spoke about my family's situation with cancer, and, you know, I think it's worth having a hearing order, a hearing about it, and being able to discuss the impacts that it has here on our resident or families, our seniors here in the City of Boston. I won't speak more about it, but allow my co-sponsors to say anything else that they may want to say.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Counsel Santana, for including me. I appreciate it. Thank you for inviting Sam Dillon and the team from Local 718, Boston firefighters. We had an excellent hearing, actually several hearings over the last few months, Counsel Santana, that you cheered, and they were, they were on the health and wellness of the men and women of the Boston Fire Department. I just want to say thank you for your leadership as well. Firefighters often experience, as Counsel Santana was talking about, and as Sam Dillon was talking about, occupational health issues such as cancer, heart-related diseases. They have a lower life expectancy due to dangerous environments they serve in with the exposure of toxic materials and hazardous conditions. Forever chemicals stay with them. We, we learned that the average number of years when a firefighter retires at the mandatory retirement age, but the average number of years a firefighter lives is five years. I look forward to this hearing where we can come together to identify programs and funding for those who are fighting occupational cancers, as well as programs that educate, raise awareness, encourage preventive care, detection, immediately, immediate intervention, and to help save the lives of our firefighters. I want to, again, say thank you to Local 718, and say thank you to Joe Finn, who was the former Fire Commissioner, for the important work he has done, Sam Dillon, and Eddie Kelly as well. And this issue is also personal to me, is my uncle Dennis Flynn, who was a decorated Vietnam veteran, was a Boston firefighter, and he died at an early age due to heart disease. So I think, I think of my uncle Dennis as well every time I go by a fire station or I see a firefighter. I think of the short number of years he lived, but I also think about the incredible contributions he made as a, as a Vietnam veteran, as a Boston firefighter, as a, as a husband, as a father, as a grandfather, as an uncle, and as a veterans advocate, wonderful person. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn, and I also just want to thank Counsel Santana for filing this, and want to thank you for that hearing. I don't know why it hit so hard, but it did when we had the hearing. We had folks from the Fire Department talk about the health and wellness issues, both mental health and physical health, and the increase of occupational cancer, and just to stop and think about firefighters knowingly sign up to do this work, knowing that it will increase, I believe their stat was 9%, their likelihood of getting cancer, and yet they still sign up to do this job. Their number of firefighters right now, people who I call friends, who are battling cancer here on our force, and I just want to make sure that they know that, you know, we are by any means necessary doing what it needs to, is removing PFAS from, as much PFAS as possible, because it's hard to get down to zero, as much PFAS as possible, from the gear and whatever else the research tells us to do, that we, that we take those steps because it's worth it. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counsel Santana for sharing his, his story about his family, and, and thank you to all our Boston firefighters who turn up every day to work, knowing that, what the job entails in terms of occupational hazards and dangers. I think the one thing that we're missing in this conversation is to just highlight just how disgraceful it is, the absolute disgrace at the federal level in the Trump regime at the moment is slashing funding for NIH, CDC, the EPA, which focuses on forever chemicals and all of the environmental causes of disease and illness in, in, in jobs. They're also slashing the occupational health infrastructure as well. And, you know, we are going to feel a tremendous impact of all of that in Boston because we are sort of a flagship for health and, and health research in the nation, and I feel that it's, while we want to support our, all those who are dealing with cancers, and especially occupational cancers, we also have to recognize that this is an all-hands-on-deck moment to protest what is happening in terms of our healthcare infrastructure, and it's happening all over the country as well, so just saying, I'm just saying. And it's, it makes me very sad as a healthcare professional that a lot of the gains that we've made over the last decades and over the last half-century are all for nothing because researchers who are researching cancer treatments, et cetera, are having their, their grants slashed and stopped, right? And that stops the whole thing. Patients will be seeing that their experimental protocols will be abandoned, and they'll be left without any further help. So I hope that we can turn the ship around, and it just, it's very distressing at this moment to think about all the lives that could be saved if we were going in a different direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Weber, Worrell. Counselor, this docket, Document Number 1062, will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, could you please read Document Number 1063?
Document Number 1063, Counsel Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss Boston Public Health Commission's Health of Asian Residents in Boston Report.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I add Counsel Murphy as an original co-sponsor?
Counsel Murphy is so added. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, the Boston Public Health Commission published the first Health of Asian Residents in Boston. The report provides information and data on the physical and mental health of Asian residents in Boston, as well as the health of Chinatown residents. I want to say thank you to Dr. Ojocuto for doing this. I appreciate her willingness to work with me, and want to say thank you for her team for going the extra mile to include the health of Chinatown residents that was excluded for a period of time, but I'm thankful that Dr. Ojocuto worked with me to include that health data for Chinatown residents. That's important for me to review it and to study it. According to the Census Bureau, in the report, 66,000 Asians live in Boston now, and the Asian community makes up 10% of the city's population. Chinatown has the highest population of Asian residents, with 46% identifying as Asian, followed by Alston and Brighton and Roxbury, and I know there's, there's a lot in Charleston as well. The report delves into many social determinants of health, including maternal and infant health, substances, chronic disease, mortality rates. While much of the data reported favorably for Asian residents, areas that require attention include improving access to medical care, expanding mental health, outreach and education, focusing on such cancers as liver and lung cancer, screening for women for breast examination as well is a critical issue. 96% of Asian adults have health insurance on par with Boston as a whole, but only 65% of the residents reported having a regular doctor compared to 83% of the non-Asian population. There is less access to consistent medical care, and language and communication access, something Counsel Mejia has always advocated for. That's critical in the medical community. The report also found that a lower percentage of Asian adults, 61%, report that they would seek therapy or mental health professionals if needed compared to their non-Asian counterparts, 74%. The report acknowledged that the lower reported rates could be due to such factors as cultural stigma, which leads to under-reporting of symptoms. Having worked with Chinatown residents for so long, the importance of increased mental health outreach and education for youth, families, immigrants, and seniors cannot be overstated. It is critical that the Boston Public Health Commission continue to outreach and invest in resources in the, in the Asian community, including language access, to ensure that residents who may need physical and mental health support can seek it, can seek that access. I'd be remiss not to mention the Union of Concerned Scientists' report in 2019, which focused on inequities, exposure to air pollution from vehicles in Massachusetts. The report stated and discussed the impact of transportation, air pollution of African-Americans, Asian-Americans, and Latino residents in Massachusetts, and they found that Chinatown neighborhood in Boston is the most disproportionately impacted area in the city and in the state of Massachusetts. Myself and then City Council Wu were at that press conference when the Union of Concerned Scientists released their report. That was where Josiah Quincy School currently stands, the New School. Chinatown residents, including children and elderly, suffer from high asthma and respiratory illness as well. I hope to discuss the findings of this report with the team at Boston Public Health Commission to see what type of work and collaboration we can do to enhance health outcomes in the Asian community. Again, I do want to acknowledge Dr. Ojocuto for working with me over the last year to make this happen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Flynn, for your advocacy of the Chinatown community, but also for all of our Asians across the City of Boston. And I also would like to thank, I know she spoke about it at our budget hearing, that she has commissioned this report and that it had come out, so I'm looking forward to hearing from the Public Health Commission on the data that they found, and I do believe that without that, we're not able to push policy that will help support the health of our Asians. I know, Counsel Flynn, you went into detail, thank you, on the disparities that our Asians across the city face in health issues, so looking forward to this hearing and co-sponsoring it with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. This docket, Document Number 1063, will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, could you please read Document Number 1064?
Document Number 1064, Counsel Murphy offered the following: Second order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding disclosure of individual receipts of city-funded down payment assistance grants dispersed since 2021.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just filing again with more clarification on some of the information that I had said before did not get returned in the first filing, so looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor. Normally, there's no speaking on 17Fs.
Madam Chair, I feel that this is redundant. The, the, as the Chair of Housing, I've reviewed all this material that was sent back. There are literally, you know, almost 100 pages of, of material sent back with regard to these questions, and I think there was some legality, issues of legality with regard to information that they could not disclose, and I feel this is a redundant 17F at this point. I respectfully ask that, you know, that we peruse the information that we've gotten, it's very valuable. And I'd also like to thank the staff at the Mayor's Office of Housing and the Boston Home Center and the Boston Housing Authority, and I don't want this to discourage applicants. I want to encourage applicants to pursue the homeownership down payment assistance programs made available through the Mayor's Office of Housing and the Boston Home Center and through the BHA, and also to encourage folks to go to boston.gov/homecenter for more information. The homeownership issue is hugely important in Alston-Brighton. This is a very valuable program for our neighborhood in Alston-Brighton, which has the lowest homeownership. Alston has the lowest homeownership in the city with, along with Mission Hill, and this program is incredibly valuable, and if, if, if the legal opinion is that it's inappropriate to share people's recipient's full name, the grant amount, the date of disbursement, the program under which the grant was, and the property, the property that was bought with the, associated with the grant, I think then we need to respect people's privacy in this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. We are in a quick, five-minute recess. We are back in session. So there were lights on for the 17F, usually discouraged conversation on 17F, but there's no rule that states that only the filer can speak on a 17F, although it's usually discouraged because 17Fs go forward usually with no issue. But even at times last term, there was, so point of order, you can speak your point of order?
Want to speak point of order? When we went into recess, I spoke with you, and you did say you would come back and talk to me before the recess ended, but you went right into the council meeting.
Oh, I was here, and I didn't see you come to me?
No, I saw you at the door, and then you would come right over.
We are in a brief recess, so you can speak to me. In session. And so I was speaking about 17Fs, usually typically discouraged, but I do remember and recall from my first term, discouraged but not disallowed. There were lights on to speak on this matter. If anyone would like to continue speaking on the 17F, you may do so. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't really going to speak on this. I do know that on 17Fs, there's kind of almost a guarantee that it'll be approved, but there's really no discussion. But I guess my question, Madam Chair, and I want to be respectful, but going forward, will there be discussions on 17Fs if a colleague wants to discuss it? Or are you saying that there will be no discussions going forward, just so that we're all on the same page? But historically, there's always been very limited or no discussions on 17Fs. But if we are going to have discussions, I would like to weigh in eventually on it.
Thank you. So it is discouraged, but there's no rule against it. During my first term, when you were Council President, 17Fs usually did go through routinely, but there were instances where there was discussion on 17Fs that were at issue and were controversial. So where I saw lights go on on an issue, I allow that. I went into a brief recess to confirm my understanding that there was nothing that limited participation on additional speaking on a 17F. It is just highly discouraged so that we can continue the flow of the meeting. But where there are strong opinions on a 17F, where there usually goes through and where it doesn't look like it's going to go through with unanimous support, and then there needs to be a roll call vote on it, I will allow for discussion on that matter. And so if you would like to speak on this matter, Counsel Flynn, you may do so now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I respectfully ask a question to Counsel Murphy?
You may. Through the chair, you may.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't get a chance to review the request that she's really asking about, but just for the audience that's listening also and for colleagues that may not have an understanding of what the request is, and I know it's in the agenda too, but Counsel Murphy, can you give a little bit of background on what you're seeking?
The chair, through the chair, Counsel Murphy, if you'd like to respond, you may.
I originally filed this asking the same questions I'm asking now, and this was a late response, but I did receive a response. We all receive it. And there were lots of pages with numbers. And then, I guess, the programs, which program they got money for, but it wasn't in any way that it kind of gave us information that could help with data. Because I was asking, they only included aggregate numerical data without identifying any of the questions I asked. So that's why I went back and I had a conversation with Claire about it, and we did disagree about whether or not the administration should or shouldn't or legally has to give us this information. But I do believe that that should be on them to come back to me in the second request if they feel as though it's not legal, because I did have a conversation. And Claire knows that I don't agree with their opinion now, that it's not legal to share some of the information that I was asking for.
Thank you. And Counsel Murphy, I pulled up their response, because I've talked to legal, I've talked to them, and it just say that record custodians must weigh the privacy interest of individuals against a public interest in disclosure. And the specific data that you asked for is not data that they have ever turned over. And while there may be, when there are grants turned over for a business, the privacy interest here, my understanding of how I'm reading this, both as a counselor, as an attorney, is that they're saying that there are privacy interests in turning over. So it's the same request that they've already denied that is before the body again.
No, it was definitely...
Counsel Murphy, would you like to respond? Through the chair, you may.
It was definitely a little different, and that's a conversation I had with IGR. And just to be clear, recipients of low-income lotteries are public records. People get them all the time. The media loves to share who has or who hasn't received it. Remember, there was a whole media expose, and Sheila Dillon, Chief Dillon, had to, you know, be interviewed on the amount of city employees who received these low-income lotteries at a building. So it is untrue. And I know the mayor holds press conferences celebrating the recipients. I know people use them in campaign mailers, celebrating that we have helped advocate for residents, and it's something I want to continue to do. And for this information I was asking, and I wanted to be specific to see which neighborhoods were receiving these grants. Were we being equitable? Were we making sure that we were doing all, or I'm doing all I can to make sure that more residents across the city are aware of these wonderful programs and that they're able to take part in them? And the information I was asking, I was just asking for clean, clear information that is legally, I believe, something we should be able to get. So this assumption that it's negative or that I'm somehow trying to steer people away from taking part, I voted yes. Time and time again, I've never voted against any expansion of homeownership or rental assistance in the city. So I just want to go on record there, because it seems to have been an assumption that I'm trying to ask for information to somehow stop people from wanting to apply. We were at the budget hearing that Counciloral chaired in district, and there was a woman who was there who was very willing to share and thanking us that she is a homeowner now because of this program, because of our advocacy here on the council. And I think this information, like we do with lotteries, when people win low mortgages to lotteries at different apartments that go up across the city, it's important that when we ask for information, they give us the information we need. I never stop others. Counsel Mahia recently asked for, you know, information on city employees who have cars, right? It's like, I'm not going to question what she wants the information for. We have a right to it, and we can use different avenues. But I think it's important that we, as colleagues, we support our colleagues. And if people use the information in a way we don't like going forward, then you can, but to make an assumption that I would want to use it in any negative way, I want to make clear that that's not my intent. It never has been.
Thank you. And Counsel Murphy, just so I can clarify, looking at your 17F, it asked for recipient's full name, grant received, date of disbursement. So is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the address, which Claire and I did speak about, I mean, deeds are public. Anyone can just type in anyone's name and see where they live and if there's a mortgage tax. So, I mean, my office could do that work if needed, but it's obviously something that's very public. And anytime city funds are given out, like I've referenced last time when I first filed it, like space grants and others, the awardees are shared, because when you receive public funds, it has to be public information that's shared. It's my understanding.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. The Chair recognizes Counseloral. Counseloral, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, this is a hard one for me, because I am a homeownership advocate, and down payment assistance is one of the real ways on how to help low-to-moderate income families, you know, actually buy here in one of the most expensive real estate markets in the country. But I do have concerns on, you know, sharing people's information. A lot of the people that you mentioned, whether they're coming here to testify, going in front of a press conference, you know, they're doing that willingly. You know, they're voluntarily coming and wanting to share their stories. So I just, you know, I wouldn't want to do anything to reduce the amount of people that are signing up. And there are some real privacy concerns that the administration has shared with us around releasing all that information. So I think this is a resource that we should be encouraging people to use and trying to promote it. I don't think we should try to add any more barriers around privacy concerns around this or even trying to attach any stigmas. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we have to decide as a body if residents receive public funds from the city, if those public funds should be made public. Space grants, someone mentioned, Counsel Murphy mentioned space grant to support small businesses. I think we all supported that. But does the public have a right to know who receives space grants? I think they do. I think the city did come up with a list of who received space grants, the names in the name of the business. It is taxpayer money. Does the public have a right to know who received grants to help for a mortgage or for homeownership? I think they do. I think the public has a right to know. If it's public funds, we have to make sure that public funds are spent appropriately, and the public has a right to know when... And the public has a right to know when, when someone does receive this type of grant, how much it was for, who it was given to, what neighborhoods were impacted, to ensure that we are being transparent, that we are being above board, that we are being ethical, we are providing positive leadership. I think transparency is a critical role that we play here in the council. The public has a right to know where their money is spent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Madam President. And, you know, has anyone looked at the amount of information that has actually been given? This here details the award, the interest subsidy amount, the property zip code, whether or not it's a BHA or a BH, Boston BHC program. What, is it a, is it a one Boston, one plus Boston mortgage program? It's, there's 28 pages. There's something like almost 1,000, 1,000 cases in this packet. And I really do feel that folks who work hard, save for their down payment, get some down payment assistance, there's numbers here, get some down payment assistance, I don't think it's anybody's business, when they apply for a mortgage, that this becomes public record. I think giving people's names, the full name, the grant amount received, the grant amount received is, you know, if this is public money, this, it's, it's all here. Identify the date of disbursement, the program under which the grant was awarded, that's in here. The property address associated with the grant. This is very different from a space grant. This is somebody's domicile. This is where somebody raises their family. This is for somebody who wants to stay and live and contribute to the city of Boston. They could go somewhere else and get a home for less than they'd pay in Boston. I think this is a gross, a gross infringement on their privacy. And I also want to say that if folks aren't satisfied with the information provided in this, in what I'm bringing up, my questions, you can ask problematic questions, programmatic questions at the Wes and Means Hearing, financial year '26. There's going to be a budget hearing on May 19th, 2025. And also, if you're unhappy with the response of our records department, you can submit an appeal to a denial of access to public records, to the supervisor of records at Boston, at the Public Records Division at the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts by calling 617-727-2832. We have a process. I think, I think the administration, the department, the mayor's Office of Housing and BHA have given us an incredible amount of information. And I think going this extra step to find people's, identify individuals by their address and their full name is a step too far. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and my beloved colleagues. I think it's time for us to recognize that it's okay to disagree without being disagreeable. I think this is, we've had a long debate in regards to this. I think, I don't know how I feel about, you know, stigmatizing people who are already, you know, applying for, I don't know, I just feel like a little weird around that, but like I just want to be mindful of that privacy. I also think there's an opportunity for us to really start thinking about the pattern that I know Counsel Murphy has named in regards to some of our public hearing, our 17F requests that sometimes gets, we get bits and pieces of information here and there. So that's a longer structural conversation. I would recommend that we potentially just, instead of going back and forth from a 17F standpoint, is that maybe we could just do a deeper dive and an audit in terms of the protocols, policies, and procedures around all grant giving and support services that the city allocates, whether that be through nonprofits, whether that be through the space grant, you know, all of our housing supports. Maybe we could just do a deeper dive on the city as a whole and how we're spending our money. And I'm going to rise again to say that's why I am trying to establish the Office of Inspector General, because some of these things could live under the preview of such an entity. And so I think, in the interest of just making sure that we put a button on this, I would recommend that we maybe just pivot and create another space to have a bigger conversation through maybe potentially a hearing order that Counsel Murphy could file for, under a post-audit lens, so that I can, you know, help support and ensure that we have an expedited hearing. If that's agreeable with you, I think that might be the best way for us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote on this 17F?
Roll call vote on docket number 1064. Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, no. Counsel Coletta Zapata. Counsel Coletta Zapata, no. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, no. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Zinn.
No.
Counsel Louie Zinn, no. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, present. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, no. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, no. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, no. And Counsel Orell. Counsel Orell, no.
Okay. This 17F order has not passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1065? Oh, Counsel Weber, we read them both at the same time? Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please read dockets number 1065 and 1066?
Docket number 1065, Counsel Weber offered the following: Resolution designating a Hero Square at the intersection of Stratford and Kennet Streets in West Roxbury in recognition of William Roddy. And docket number 1066, Counsel Weber offered the following: Resolution designating a Hero Square at the intersection of Stratford and Kennet Streets in West Roxbury in recognition of Thomas Roddy.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to be quick. I know there's a large power outage across the city. Apparently 25,000 buildings affected, people stuck in elevators, maybe traffic lights. Hope you're, I think we need to get out there and, you know, make sure we're helping our constituents. I just, you know, this is to set up a Hero Square at Stratford and Kennet Street in West Roxbury to recognize, you know, one family's incredible sacrifice. Two brothers died in World War II. William Andrew Roddy, 21, died when USS Bar was hit by a torpedo from a German submarine off the north coast of Africa in May 1944. His older brother, Thomas Roddy, who's 25, was killed November 13th, 1942, when his ship in the Pacific, the USS Juno, was sunk at the naval battle of Guadalcanal. The USS Juno was, is well-known. It's the, on that ship were the five Sullivan brothers, who all died in the sinking of that ship. In addition, there were apparently around 100 officers or military members, Navy seamen, who survived the sinking but were left in the water for eight days, and only 10 of them survived. The fact that Thomas Roddy is a BLS grad and a BC student who dropped out to go fight for our country in World War II was there, you know, and that we could play some role in recognizing his sacrifice at this Hero Square, you know, is just a tribute to that family for what they sacrificed for us. Some of their relatives still live in West Roxbury. I look forward to gathering with them at the Hero Square. I invite all my colleagues, if we can get this set up. And so, thank you very much. I apologize. Do I, I guess I would like both of these resolutions to pass, if that's how this usually works, Council President.
Yes, you're seeking suspension and passage on both of the dockets.
Okay, okay, yeah, I would appreciate that passage today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on either of these dockets? The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to Counsel Weber for bringing this important matter before the body. Incredible sacrifices from this family. West Roxbury, as Counsel Weber knows, has a tremendous amount of men and women that have contributed greatly to this nation and the U.S. military. So I want to acknowledge Counsel Weber for recognizing this wonderful family, the incredible contributions they have made to our, to our nation. There was a South Boston gentleman on that ship as well, the USS Juno, Martin F. McDonough. They named the veterans' post after him on West Broadway. And Counsel Weber is exactly right about USS The Sullivan's. There's a beautiful Navy ship, USS The Sullivan's, that's stationed in Florida as well. But I know, Counsel Weber, this will be a tremendous honor, and the family will respect the incredible work that you're doing here today. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, yes, I want to uplift and thank you, Counsel Weber, for doing both of these Hero Square designations. It's really important work. And also just wanted to address, there were, just because you mentioned it, there is an adverse power outage affecting a lot of the city, including the bowling and several of our schools. It appears that it may be resolved, but I do understand that there are councils who urgently want to make sure that their districts and everything is okay. So, okay, we will take each docket one by one. Oh, would anyone else, okay, we're going to first start with docket 1065. Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Orell, please add the chair. All those in favor of, Counselor Weber seeks suspension and adoption of docket number 1065. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket number 1065 has been adopted. Would anyone like to add their name to docket number 1066? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Orell, please add the chair. Counsel Weber seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1066. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Thank you. The docket, docket number 1066 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 1067?
Docket number 1067, Counsel Santana offered the following: Resolution urging the federal government not to cut life-saving cancer research in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't speak on this, because I spoke about it during the presentation, but do want to, I would like to add Counsel Durkin as an original co-sponsor to this resolution.
Thank you. Counsel Durkin is so added. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to suspend and pass this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recogn, okay, thank you. Counselors Santana and Durkin seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 1067. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 1068?
Docket number 1068, Counselors Flynn and Counselors Murphy and Flynn offered the following: Resolution in support of ethical leadership and a council vote on the status of Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So I did file this last week. It's a late file because we did, things did change after the 10 a.m. requirement to file anything, and it was blocked, which that's okay. And here we are. So like I said, I was going to file it again this week on the council agenda. So every day constituents ask me, why is she still there? Just this morning, at the coffee hour that Counselor Durkin and Flynn hosted up at the Public Garden, I mean, the Boston Common, two people there asked me again this morning. And they're referring to the District 7 counselor who recently pled guilty to federal corruption charges. Legally, she remains in office until sentencing, but morally, that's a different story. I understand the legal constraints. The Supreme Judicial Court's decision in Turner v. City of Boston clarified that the council lacks the authority to remove a member before sentencing. Rule 48 mandates the council president to refer such matters to the council upon a felony conviction, but it doesn't grant removal powers. In response to our resolution, the council president has cited Rule 48 in the Turner decision asserting that the council lacks the authority to remove a member before sentencing. While I agree this is legally accurate, it misses the essence of my proposal. This proposal resolution doesn't seek to enforce a legal removal, but to express our collective moral stance. By leaning on legal technicalities, the council risks appearing evasive, avoiding a clear position on an issue that deeply concerns our constituents. However, this isn't about legal authority, it's about moral responsibility. We, as elected officials, have an obligation to uphold the integrity of our office and the trust of our constituents. Remaining silence sends the wrong message. The resolution I filed along with Counselor Flynn isn't about forcing anyone out, it's about taking a stand. We pass non-binding resolutions on various issues all the time, on international conflicts, national policies, historical acknowledgements. For example, the council has previously passed resolutions supporting international human right efforts, even though we lack the authority to enforce such matters. These actions, while symbolic, reflect our collective values and our commitment to justice. So why hesitate now when the issue is within our chamber? The District 7 counselor continues, continued presence undermines public trust and distracts from our work. Her district deserves effective representation, and the city deserves a council that leads with integrity. Some argue that taking a vote is divisive or premature, but leadership isn't about waiting for the courts, it's about responding to the community concerns. By voting on this resolution, we demonstrate our commitment to the ethical governance and accountability. I urge my colleagues to join me in this stand. Let's show the people of Boston that we hear them, we respect them, and we're committed to doing what's right, not just what's legally required. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's important for this body to demonstrate positive leadership, ethics, accountability, transparency. I think the status quo is no longer an option. We need to show to the residents of Boston that we understand the significant challenge, ethical challenge this body faces. And we must rise to the occasion and ensure that ethics will always be part of city government in that we will address issues that come along, even if they are controversial. But it's important for us to collectively come together as a body and provide the leadership that has been lacking for a period of time because of our inaction on this particular matter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. I just want to make one thing very clear. The 48 email that I wrote asking guidance from Corporation Council was in no way sparked by anybody's filing. As the president of this council, I act on what I believe my authority is and should be. And under Rule 48, it states that I have an obligation to refer something automatically that had nothing to do with anybody's resolution filing. That was me in my capacity as president of this body seeking counsel and guidance on a rule that preceded a legal decision that then took a lot of the power or meaning or substance out of Rule 48 that has merely now become a procedural requirement that perhaps should be revisited. So just want to make that clear, that that was me acting in my capacity as a president, not in response to anybody's filing. I just want to make that abundantly clear. It was important for me to make sure that that was referred to the Boston City Council, removed Counsel Fernandez Anderson from committees, did that upon notice of her intent to plead guilty more than a month ago. In December, as a president of the city council, I stated what I believed was in the best interest of this body, speaking on behalf of this body. Believe that because the public interest is so important, because public trust is so important, because making sure that voters and residents believe in us and our ability to do this work, that I believe that it was in the best interest of the counselor to resign. Said that clearly, emphatically, and I've repeated that as such, as the leader of this body, who knows that residents want us filling potholes, cleaning streets, doing all of that. So I'm here to make sure that we're doing the work for the people, that we're not playing politics, and that we are following the letter of the law. The chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I think everybody already knows that I've gone on record about this particular matter. You can look up my stance in many publications. And so I think, I would hope that folks understand that when I, when I, when I'm speaking on this now, that I've already gone public, like I've already made my stance on this. And everybody has the opportunity to do that, whether, and whether, and if you don't want to say anything, I think it's up to you and the districts that you represent of whether or not, if that's a good idea for you. I, like, I'm not here to tell anybody what they should or shouldn't do. And I've had many conversations with my constituents about this, and what they have said is that in past years, there has been a lot of acrimony on this body, and they want me to do the work. They want me to fix our potholes. They want me to fix our streets. They want me to pass legislation and policy that expands affordable housing. They want me to use our legislative tools that we have here, that I revere so much within this chamber, to further the work of people, of the people, that betters our communities at the, at the end of the day. We already have legal guidance on this. This is a non-binding resolution. This won't allow us or enable us to remove our colleague. I'm not necessarily sure what this is trying to accomplish. It urges immediate action to formally address the matter. And I believe that that is something that has already taken place. I do think that using a resolution in this chamber is what some would call an inappropriate use of our power here. I just don't agree that this is, this is the correct vehicle to do this. And so, again, I've already gone on record on this issue, and I respectfully say this, that I just don't think that this is a good use of our city council time and resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta Zapata. And thank you. I believe that you came, the same day that I came out, you also came out and made a statement, very clear statement, saying where you stood. And I, as again, president of this body, made that statement very clear. Remember, Friday, we had an elections hearing meeting, it was December, and made a statement. So, and it's important that we just say that everyone is empowered to do what they want, and exemplify leadership as you so choose. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We have been talking about this for months. I share the frustration of many of my constituents that we spend way too much time focused on these issues, and that we need to be focused on the needs of our community and our constituents. I think the potholes need fixing. We have a lot of work to do, and frankly, you know, the legal process is taking its course, and we are not going to change that direction. We're not going to change the outcome. And I feel that at this moment, we need to focus on the work that we are sent here to do, and if, if that's not, seems appropriate, and we feel that we need further, further discussion, then we should, we should send this to the committee on the whole or something. But I really feel at this point, we've been talking about this way too long. Thank you.
Counsel Braden, is that, are you, are you seeking suspension and adoption? Is that an objection? I can't tell.
That's an objection.
Okay. It's an objection to docket number 1068. This docket will be referred to the committee on the whole. Okay. I believe we are on, moving on to personnel orders, but before we do that, would anyone like to add their name to a matter or ask for a motion to reconsider on a vote if you were out of chambers at a time? The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
I apologize. I would like to add my name to docket number 1058.
Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counsel Weber to docket number 1058? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Docket number 1069, personnel order, Counsel Louie Jean. And docket number 1070, Counsel Louie Jean for Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. The chair moves to passage of dockets number 1, dockets number 1069 through 1070. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The personnel orders have passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Would anyone like to pull anything from the green sheets? No? Okay. We are now moving on to late files. I've been informed by the clerk that there are three late file matters, two personnel orders, and one absence letter. Can you please read the, all the late file matter, could you, could you please read the two personnel late file matters into the record?
First late file matter, personnel order, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Fitzgerald. And second late file matter, personnel order, Counsel Louie Jean for Counsel Fitzgerald.
Thank you. All in favor of allowing these late file matters, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. These matters are added to the record. All in favor of passing the personnel orders, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. And Mr. Clerk, could you please read the late file absent letter into the record?
Third late file absence letter from Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Dear colleagues, I hope this message finds you well. I'm writing to let you know that I'm unable to attend today's council meeting, as I am still attending to an ongoing family medical matter that requires my care and attention. Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you. This late file absent letter will be placed on file. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. Birthdays, Wilmer's birthday is today. Happy birthday, Wilmer, in Counsel Santana's office. Megan Kavanaugh and Counsel Murphy celebrate next week, May 20th. Happy birthday to Counsel Murphy and to our own counselor, right there, I didn't see you, Megan Kavanaugh. Geminis, right?
Almost.
Oh, what, Taurus. Okay, my sister's May 21st, and she's a Gemini, so I'm always, okay. Happy birthday to the Tauruses. Also, I stated before, but we're raising the Haitian flag on Friday at noon, and I hope to see you all there. There's also the Haitian Unity Parade on Sunday at noon, 12:30, in Mattapan Square. The chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to say happy birthday to my son, Mac. I can't wait to get home and eat cake with him tonight. He turned six, and I'm so proud of him. Thank you.
Awesome. Happy birthday to Max.
Mac.
Max. Happy birthday to Mac. Mac, happy birthday. Okay, the chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to rise to say that there have been so many hearing orders that I have filed that have just, I would say, died in committee and have never been heard. And a council colleague, rightfully so, used the word "hounded" when she said that Counsel Murphy has hounded our office to try to get a hearing scheduled, and I respect the strong word because it's what I did have to do.